Good afternoon, and welcome to the Commission Workshop for November 4th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Right, John.
I'm sorry? It's on?
Yeah, you were talking.
Oh, okay. I was looking down. I'm sorry. Now, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have a very busy evening tonight, so if anybody wants to speak, you need to make sure you fill out a card and have that given to the city clerk by 6:15. And we're also going to make one change, if I can get the agreement from the commissioners. Instead of three minutes, we're going to go down to two minutes. This is a, it's just a workshop, so it's really for us to have the opportunity to talk. So this will be coming up in further, or in meetings in the near future as well, to talk about. So, so let's go ahead, and can I get the agreement on two minutes for the, the public comment?
That's fine with me.
Okay. So, please, if you'll change that to two minutes. All right. The first item that we have tonight is the Commission authority, give Commission authority for dynamic parking pricing. I thought we beat this one pretty hard at the last meeting, but what, do you have any documentation or any attachments or anything to go with this?
No, it was just a discussion to bring up and give authority to Charles to work dynamic pricing based on his, what he sees, based on demand.
Kind of strange.
Oh, it's all strange.
It's all strange.
Trying to make money is very strange.
What are people's thoughts on, on taking this one on?
Did we ever get any kind of a, forgive me, because I, I can't remember, didn't we do like a test type thing for that, and the results came back?
We did. But I don't think they were conclusive, correct?
They weren't. I mean, the, the timing, the thought was great, the timing wasn't great. So I think even raising the prices for, and I'm talking off the top of my head, I didn't know that was part of this discussion, was less in the one month we tried it, the 30 days in 2025 than it was during the 30 days in 2024. So that, that's not good data to use for anything, is my position.
It is by understanding that we have that app with the QR code, and we could raise it after a certain point on Fridays and have it, you know, increased for Saturday and special events on Sunday, such as the event that we have it on the beach every Sunday. So, and we just see how busy it gets, you know, and if it doesn't work, we don't do it.
I mean, what I would say is if we had like one of Arden's spreadsheets that, I mean, some sort of analysis that says, if we do this and start it on, you know, X date, and we do it for six months, it's going to generate this much more revenue, and it's going, we're going to have this much less parking, but it's still going to, but we have zero data that I'm aware of.
We do have zero data.
Just do dynamic parking, and so I don't know what, I don't know what to look at.
Yeah, and there are no materials. What I would like to do is just move on. It'll take three of us to, to basically say, let's go ahead and move on, but the dynamic parking pricing, we kind of beat that one to death, and whether five, 5.50, what was it going to do, and we, we came up with something. And also, we have a document, that is a fee document, and that's where it would need to be, is in that fee document.
Right. Well, what I was thinking with dynamic pricing is, you know, where it's not busy, say on a Tuesday, so just today, it's not busy, we keep it at four, but on the weekend, we bump it up to the high number on, on the document that we have, like the 5.50. So we do dynamic pricing on the weekends to make money. We don't do full price on, on Tuesdays, you know, when it's slow on the beach, but we do full pricing on the weekends.
Well, we do have it as full pricing on weekends. It's 5.50 on the weekends, and it's $5 every other day.
And what about 4th of July landing on a Tuesday?
Well, there's, as you know, as I do, there is a disclaimer there that basically says, all of these special events will be $30, so we, we have our fee in that as well.
Right. Up to 50.
I, I would just like to add, we just voted at our last meeting to go from four to $5 an hour. That's a 25% increase, so that pretty much captured any flexibility for dynamic pricing, I would think. But when Arthur suggests, and by the way, I voted against that increase, but when Arthur suggests that, that we, we keep it at $4 an hour and use the $5 an hour as some dynamic pricing, then, then, then I would be certainly more open to that. But I'd hate to add dynamic pricing, layer it on to what we just did, and that's what raised the parking rates 25%.
Right. I don't want to layer on top, I just want to have the city manager have the authorization to figure it out to make the most money. That's the point of raising the fees, that's the point of dynamic pricing, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Are we good to move on?
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay, because we've got a lot of folks that are waiting for us. Okay, so we're going to move to C2, the future of Treasure Bay discussion, and this was asked to be on the agenda for our Vice Mayor, Tammy Vasquez.
Thank you. And Kathy, you kind of wanted to give us an update of where we're at right now, right?
Can you hear me with this? All right. Yes, I wanted to give an update of what we've done so far and where we are with the projects that we've been doing the last few months. Let me make sure I know what I'm doing here. So, oh, well, I'm going to go a little backwards. So part of our projects with the grants we've gotten, with the land water conservation fund that we received for the walking trail, you can see that we've installed the new walking trail. We've also installed the exercise equipment that was required to be placed somewhere along the trail, and we will be installing the two 10 by 10 gazebo's in the near future once the plantings for the living shoreline are completed. So you'll see that we have the ADA kayak launch, and we're hoping to open that in December. What we're looking to do is provide kayak rentals and storage rentals for persons who want to have easy access to the water and easy access to their rental, their kayaks, so hopefully we can get some of those there. We're going to reach out to the gentleman who does book off right park and used to do the beach pavilion for the rentals, to extend his contract. The Living Shoreline project is slated to be done by mid to late November. With that, we've added, obviously, the Living Shoreline, some fountains for the ponds. We also have a boardwalk that will have educational signage along it, kind of depicting what the different landscape is that we have there and different wildlife that you'll see. The USTA Florida Foundation provided us with a hurricane relief for the damage we received to our tennis courts. We have 281,000, up to 281,650. We have just, almost this week, completed our installation of all new fencing on courts one through six, seven, eight, and the basketball court, and starting tomorrow, we'll be resurfacing the courts. One of the things we're running into is issues with our lights. They're shorting out, we're having some problems, which we felt we would due to the flooding and where our fuses and power boxes are. So we are working with FEMA to hopefully get some mitigation funds to replace the wiring and the fuse boxes for our tennis courts. So with that said, we now have been asked if there's any plans for what the next steps are, what the future of Treasure Bay will be. We do have a lot of damage from the Living Shoreline, we will be having to fix a lot of irrigation. We shut off all the irrigation to the property other than the tennis courts because it kept breaking, and so we're going to have to, once they move out, we're going to have to get a lot of that concrete up. They're supposed to be tilling and either re-sodding or laying new sod, but we're going to have to fix the irrigation that we have that may be damaged. One of the other things is Public Works has obtained quotes to do the maintenance building roof replacement, as well as repair the clubhouse so we can have indoor plumbing and office space in hopefully the near future. So with that said, I have a slide that Commissioner Vasquez has shared, and she can go from here, and I'm here to answer any questions as well as Gary.
Can I, before you start, can I ask a question about the living seawall?
Yes.
Like, is that progressing along, like, at, the way it was supposed to as far as the timeline and stuff?
It is. I can tell you that the estimated completion date was September, but then we had some issues with that section of seawall, and they had to wait for the permitting. So once they got the permitting, they've progressed with it. So we're probably about two months behind.
Because I, I was just curious, I mean, I, I've made no bones about the fact I'm not a big living seawall fan, which probably isn't popular, or maybe it is, I don't know. But I drove by there on the boat the other day, and they had erected, erected a brand new seawall behind, behind there, like a huge section of it, like, raided like the exact same one I have behind my house, and then they, then they're dumping rocks on top of this seawall, like, it still seems like it would have been cheaper just to put a regular seawall in there, but I, I don't know, so. Was there problems with it? Is that why they had to like?
And I don't know where Gary is, I'll try to give you my technical, yes, we needed to replace our seawall, we had big holes.
No, I get that, but anywhere there are problems with the construction, that they had to build a brand new section of seawall and then dump rocks on top of it.
Yeah, it collapsed.
It collapsed.
Some of my, some of my understanding is, is, um?
I know.
Gary Volnik, Director of Public Works, my understanding is from the project that the, the seawall needed repair or replacement, and some areas had seagrasses that couldn't be impacted. Other areas were, were a lot less open bottom, and, and they used the rock in those areas where there was seagrass, they had to do the vertical wall. So there is a section where it's just a vertical wall, and they, some, some areas, they, they faced it with the rock, some areas, it was a little bit of variability to give habitat, and it, it's an environmental thing. I'm not necessarily knowledgeable about the, the design, why they, they chose this particular method, but that was what was bid, and the project, it, other than the fact that that portion did collapse a couple of months ago, and we had to get that permitted, the consultant got that portion of the work re-permitted to address that we were going to add rock in front, which was never part of the plan. That is being, they did that at no cost because they realized there was an issue with some of the design. The rock itself is being addressed through the contingency, which is part of the approved contract that you all have, have authorized. So the projects, it is delayed because of that extra rip wrap, but I think that you've been told November, mid-November.
Mid-November, not in November.
Very shortly, we should be wrapping it up, but.
So maybe that section of seawall is going to stay like that, you're saying?
There is a portion, I believe, that just gets, it's just going to be a vertical face.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
I went out there Friday and took a look at it, in the southern part of, of the Treasure Bay, where they have the seawall, where you saw the construction, I talked to them, they said they were only, they weren't replacing the whole seawall, they were just putting a new seawall cap on that, and they thought they were going to be finished with that in the next week or two. That's on the south side of Treasure Bay.
All right. Thank you, Gary. All right. So the slide up here, I wanted to have it made so it wasn't just words, so you actually could see, because, you know, unfortunately, rumors start flying around about different things, and so I wanted you, you know, about what I wanted and my thoughts on it. So I had it done like this, so, you know, hopefully, you know, even the city possibly could put it out so that, you know, maybe you could save it, look at it, think about it, give feedback on it. But I'll go through them line by line. So Treasure Bay is 17-plus acres, and it is one of Treasure, well, I dare say Treasure Island's most beautiful piece of property, and it is, it's definitely, even before the hurricane, was not in the best of shape, and I think we all could agree on that, and then after the hurricane, we all know what happened to all of our properties. But looking at it, you know, in the last decade, the average age of Treasure Island has dropped significantly. We've had a lot of families move in our community, and post-hurricane, we've had even more families buying. I know in Isla Capri alone, in my district, we have lots of families of young, from very little, you know, young kids through teenagers, we have lots of families, and then we definitely have, you know, our older population, which I'm quickly, whoop, quickly becoming part of. And I have to get this in, I'm no longer on baby watch, I am officially a grandma. So we went up last week and saw them. But anyway, having a multi-generational activity center in this amazing piece of property that is accessible for all residents and has activities for all residents and visitors alike, but more about the residents, because this is, this is our little piece of paradise out here, and I just, I think that is such an amazing use for it. And some of the things that I had thought of were, you know, a clubhouse featuring, you know, possibly a restaurant and bar, tennis and pickleball courts, there's plenty of room, and there, unlike on Capri, we could potentially even do like a competition-type pickleball court, because we're starting with nothing, so it would really, there's plenty of room for it. And then some type of a golf feature. Now, I know a lot of people are afraid especially, and I get it, the townhomes that run along the backside there, I 100% understand the concerns. So those who aren't familiar with pop stroke, definitely try to look it up, but it's just a smaller, more fun, I don't want to say like Topgolf, because a lot of people know that, but I guess you could say in that family, but some type of a golf feature, preferably along there so that you still have the protection of having more of a quieter type activity in that area. A bandshell out toward the end, and when I say bandshell, almost like a park setting, obviously, I, I don't know how many of you have been to Rock Park, they have a bandshell, which is basically a stage with a, a cover. So you can do small venue-type concerts with local bands. I will tell you, it's also very popular for even big artists to do a very small venue like this could possibly be, to kick off concerts, so, you know, the potential for that is there. But also, not just that, you can have farmers' markets and holiday markets, and possibly even host, you know, again, like Rock Park, this weekend, they have King of the Beach. You know, it is just a great general activity area where the bandshell would be. We already have the walking trail, that is, I think you said, almost done or is done?
So we have the walking trail, and then we have a boardwalk, and along that boardwalk will have the educational signage that was required by the grant.
Which is wonderful, and we could even go a step further with that, possibly working with Tampa Bay Watch to have some type of an educational focus about the living seawall and about all of that, about, you know, native plants, doing a native plant-type planting all around there. And there's lots of grants available for that as well, if you work with someone like in Eckerd College or Tampa Bay Watch or something like that. Some of you have been, I'm sure, to the pier, and you've seen the Tampa Bay Watch educational thing that's kind of in the middle of the pier. Not saying to that size, but something, you know, something like that in a smaller scale would be amazing. Picnic pavilions, which I know we're already in the process of doing. And then a children's area, now, we do have a small children's area right now, but if we expanded the children's area, add a splash pad, there's also, and I don't know how many of you have seen them, the like treasure mining, you can go, I know there's a zoo in South Carolina that has it, there's a place in Ohio, they're all over a lot of cities, and basically, it's a very small land portion type thing, and I regret I didn't do a picture up there, I should have. But basically, it's a wood structure, it's not expensive to build, but you buy inexpensive things. For Treasure Island, we could focus on doing like little gold coins or shells or just little treasures, and the kids go through, you know, for however much you end up charging, whether it's $10 or whatever, they get their little screening thing, and they get to basically look for treasure. One of the reasons, when I was doing the research on all of that, that I brought that up, one, it draws families like crazy, and it, it makes a lot of money for the cities because it's a very low entry point, and it brings a lot of money in, and it takes one person to run it. So, and actually, we have someone. So, and actually, we have someone in the city that I was able to consult with, or I apologize, that lives in the city, who actually built and ran the one in the South Carolina Zoo. And so I was able to talk to him about that, and the, you know, just the amount of people that it drew was amazing. So just expanding the children's area, you know, so that it is welcoming to families, and just making it literally a place where everybody in the community, there's something for them to go do, whether it's tennis or pickleball, or go to a concert, or go to a farmer's market, or just walk the trail every day. We have the exercise equipment out there, you know, even if we wanted to expand on that, we could expand on that, to really make it a place where the entire city could enjoy it. And that is definitely something that I think would benefit the community, and it definitely would bring, I feel it would give the community more of a community feel. We don't have a place like that, we don't have a place where everybody can gather. There may be people that show up at a concert that didn't know we do tennis lessons, I see our tennis pro back there, you know, and they're like, oh, my gosh, you know, I'd like to sign up for that. So it just opens the door to really bring the community together, and I think make an even more beautiful area than it's ever been, and a more useful area. And I do know everybody would be concerned about parking, and that has been taken into consideration. When I've, a friend of mine who is, he's actually done these type things, he lives in North Florida, and there's enough property to bring around to the side, we can definitely expand the parking, there's no question about it. But also, a lot of the people around the side, around the side, again, I'm not an architect, however.
Please, don't be just yelling out from the crowd. You'll have some time at the end of this to to make your comments known.
Thank you. And we have to remember, this is mostly neighborhood people that are coming. So it's, people are going to walk there, ride their bikes there, take their golf carts there, and yes, there absolutely will be some that will bring their cars. When you do a concert, just like 90% of every other thing that we do, including sanding ovations, they can park elsewhere and we bus them in. We have a brand-new school bus that we can bus them in, or if it's a, you know, we need help, we can get that. There's deals that can be made in parking lots all over the place, it happens all the time, King of the Beach this weekend in Madera Beach, they bus them in from Madera Beach Middle School. So there's always ways to work around those issues for bigger events, it's more about just making sure there's room for the everyday, the people coming to use the tennis courts, which, you know, we have that now, even if we didn't expand it, for just everyday use. So the parking can definitely be handled for events and such, just like it is in every other venue. And it's off, off-parking, and then you bring people in. And then a lot of people use Uber and Lyft and things like that for those events as well. So I will leave that there, that is just my kind of vision for it, and I would love to hear what everybody else thinks.
I think we're not as far apart as it seems.
Thank you. I don't think we're as far apart as it as it might seem. I was writing down and comparing your features for a multi-use facility compared to what either we already have or could have, and we already have the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, the playground, the kayak launch, the walking trail, picnic pavilions, shuffleboard courts, there's a volleyball volleyball court there as well, so I, or was at one point in time. So anyway, I think that really the big difference was that you added was the pop stroke, something similar to that, the bandshell and the restaurant and bar versus a golf course. So when we compare uses, it's really, you know, we can, the things that we have in common, we have in common, which means what your vision is versus what we have there now or likely to have, it really comes down to what do you do with the golf course part of it. And I think we're going to hear from a lot of people here very shortly, that, you know, many of our residents want that golf course, it's part of our heritage, it's our identity, and it's, it is open to the public. So I, you know, my preference at this stage, unless unless there's an overwhelming support otherwise from from the residents, I think rebuilding the golf course is the, along with these other features, is the best way to go.
Well. I've received a lot of emails in support and against and so on, but I'd like to hold judgment for now until I see a master plan for Treasure Bay that's fiscally responsible. So, but I do have a couple of questions for Kathy. The rehabbing of the bathrooms in the small office space in the clubhouse, is there a current estimated schedule and cost for that?
So Gary's received three quotes, and he can answer to that probably a little bit more than I can, to redo basically not, you know, the flooring, the restroom facilities, the doors are not working since the flood, the windows, and just not returning like the counter space and all that back into the building. I don't know, is Gary in here? I don't know what all three of his quotes were, but we have that, and we don't have a definite insurance amount yet, we're working with insurance on the clubhouse. We do have some insurance monies that you've seen in the in the funding section of this. So we're hoping everything to get, along with the beach pavilion, get this done by summer, or the next few months hopefully, so we can get away from the portlets and get people indoors for the restrooms.
I received a lot of emails for the for the portlets. And then, of course, will Public Works be managing construction, or who's going to be?
Gary will be overseeing the roof project, Public Works will, and the clubhouse project.
Fantastic, thank you.
Real quick on a comment, Arden, and this is something honestly I just thought about when you were talking. So we have the walking path around the entire perimeter, we're going to have picnic pavilions. The liability of having flying golf balls when people are using exercise equipment and pavilions and walking on the path, that is, that's very concerning, my friend. And that's as it stands right now, that's without adding anything else, just with the perimeter walking path and picnic pavilions, that could prove to be a very big issue, in my opinion.
I just wanted to make it clear that the last commission that was in place voted for this, I'm not sure if it was unanimous, but I don't, I was on the podium speaking against it because it'd be doomed, but yeah, it's the last commission that voted, not the three new members up here.
The the last commission voted for what?
The living, the approval of the living shoreline.
Okay.
Right? Yep.
Yeah, 17 acres, beautiful piece of property, you won't find a better piece of property in Pinellas County. I support green space, and and that's truly what I think needs to be here. There are things that we can do, she's got Popgolf up there, there's a couple of other less frequently-used names for for basically a chip and a putt and everything else. But something like a pop stroke, it takes two acres, so it's basically 18 small holes and, but it's two acres, which leaves then six acres, because they didn't, if a golf course was designed, it was about eight, eight and a half acres. I think that that, there's not that much land left available, I think that it, with the way that everything turned out, it's a little bit less than the eight acres. But I think that, I did a study on 23 and 24, because I go back to on this issue since 2021. And and the biggest thing is that there isn't as much activity as people would like to think there is. Both in 2023 and 2024, it hit the peak in 2024, and and that was 39, if I just take how many people paid for golf and go divided by 365, the number was 39 people per day. Now, I understand that some people, rainy days, you're not going to be out there, but still, 39 people per day doing it with simple math. I think that what we need to do is be able to use it much better with a green space. I'm not really in favor of looking for a golf course to go back in, but I'm also not looking to to basically fill it with parking and with playgrounds and everything else. I mean, I think that the green space is fantastic. When I, you go walking around there, and now you folks know better than I do, you know, you see the dolphin, you see everything, and it truly is a great place. And if you go and you've walked around the edge, and it's going to be a little bit hard to do with the riprap and that, but that's why we're going to have something that looks over the water. There are little seahorses, there is living coral, there are the grasses, I mean, there is, the living shoreline is an environmental-type way of doing things. And also, though, it gives people the opportunity to, you know, one-on-one, walking down, you know, seeing dolphins, seeing all the different animals and everything that that are there. So like I said, I would be interested in looking at the pop stroke kind of concept. I think that for a lot of this, it's good, but I'm more of a green space-type guy, and let the families enjoy it, and I'll guarantee you, you will have more than 39 people per day out on that facility.
Let me address Vice Mayor Vasquez's comments earlier. When I first got involved with the commission, and I had heard about a walking trail on a golf course, I, my initial reaction was the same as yours, is that seemed like they were not very compatible. But I have to share this story with with you, last year I was in Scotland, I guess the home where golf was invented or created or whatever, and I went golfing on a golf course in Scotland, and it was just outside of Dub, not Dublin, but whatever the capital of Scotland is.
Edinburgh.
Edinburgh, thank you. Yeah, anyway, what was interesting on this golf course was beautiful, kind of along hills, pretty rough hills, but there were joggers, there were people walking their dogs, there were people on horseback all over this golf course, and they learned how to get along with each other. If I was getting ready to tee off on this golf course, and I saw somebody coming by on a horseback, I would wait, or they would wait for me, but it was, it was, it just seemed to work out. So they either waited for me to hit, or they went, and I waited for them to get out of the way. So after I came back from that experience, I said, okay, I kind of see where this where this can be compatible. You have to use good judgment, both the people there walking or on the trail, as well as the golfers themselves, you have to use good judgment there, and I assume the picnic pavilions would not be on the golf course part of itself, it would be closer to where the tennis courts are now. Anyway, I just wanted to add that.
I would love to think that we could work together, that people would work together like that, but I'm sure in Scotland, they've been doing that for hundreds of years.
They had, it was my first time, but.
Which is, it sounds incredible, I'm sure.
I picked up on the rules pretty quickly, and you just.
Yeah, and that makes sense, but in a small city, it's just the liability is worrisome for sure.
My thing on, so, yeah, last time we had a talk about Treasure Bay, I brought like a whole kind of slideshow that was pretty similar to this. But I think, I think there's a couple of different things. I do agree on, it'd be nice to have a place where the entire town could gather. You know, right now, I think we have our Christmas party and our other stuff like out in the street in front of the city hall, right? And the other thing I want to say, I mean, I'm hoping that when you said bandshell, you're not talking about like having Aerosmith there, right? I mean, we're, you're talking about like, you're talking about if we have a Christmas party, maybe there's a local band that.
Right, like very similar to Rock Park.
That plays for three hours. So I just don't want people to think that, you know, you're having some sort of giant concert. And I'd love to see like more, you know, more pickleball courts, that's super popular, which I think there'd be room for, a couple more sand volleyball courts. And again, make it a place where the the whole town can gather. And I don't think, again, even if you have a, even if you have a Christmas, we have our Christmas party out here in front, there's not 500 people there. I mean, I don't think you'd have, I don't think you're going to be bothering folks. So I think what it really comes down to is is the whole golf thing, and I guess from my, and I don't know, because I've lived here six years, and I, just so you know, I grew up on a public golf course, my house was on the seventh tee box, I started working out there when I was 14 years old, I worked there all the way through college, and I would go out and hit balls every single night behind my house. So I get the golf, I guess, for my whole question would be, is there some sort of, what's the word I'm looking for, some sort of meeting in the middle of some sort of golf thing that we could still do there that, you know, is acceptable, a compromise where, like John said, maybe it doesn't take up eight acres, it takes up four, and we can still get to go out and hit balls and chip and putt and do this and that, and also allow it to make us the center of, you know, this whole center of the community. And I know there's some people that are, you know, super into the golf course, I don't blame anybody for being super into the golf course. I guess my question is, the only way I see something like this kind of working is as if we can come, if we could work with the golfers and find out if there's any kind of compromise as to kind of, you know, something that could be out there that the golfers would still be happy with and that everyone else could be happy with. On my little thing that I made up last time, I thought I was going to get to show it, but last time we talked about Treasure Bay, it just ended. I had boat docks around the whole thing, so if there's like a little restaurant at the, and bar at the clubhouse, you could boat over there, but I'm not sure you could have boats anymore there with the living seawall, so.
And that's a good question, Kathy, that I forgot to ask you, where the kayak launch is, that flat part along there? Okay. Just, and this is going to be a big guesstimate, knowing how the kayak launch is, where the living seawall is, do you believe there is any room for boat docks out there potentially? Or do you have any, if you don't have thoughts on it, I see you shaking your head back there, yes?
Is that Gary?
You work there every day, so you know what it looks like, so. But I don't want to, I got you.
You can, you'll just have to extend it beyond the living shoreline, the rock, so kind of like we did with the kayak launch, so.
So you could do it, it would just be out further and just like that.
And then, you know, just making sure all the seagrasses and we have the permitting, and so that would be the thing.
Isn't there a bunch of stuff under the water?
There is, you would have to do, we had to do all the reports for seagrasses and, you know, all that under there, coral, so you'd have to just make sure that was clear, depending on how far out you went.
So, so I mean, I think from my perspective, I like almost all of it, I just think we need to have some sort of golf thing there, and then the question becomes, can we come to a compromise, I guess, on what the golf thing is? Maybe we can, maybe we can, but I, again, it's, I don't, I think I've been there once to play pickleball, I've lived here six and a half years. You know, I wish there was more that that I could do do over there, as far as a bunch of community things and different things, but, so anyhow, that's where I'm at.
Great. So we do have an agenda meeting coming up here in hopefully 20 so or minutes, but so let's move to public comment. First one I have is Kim Correllis, Correllis?
Correlli.
Oh, thank you.
Kim Correlli, live at 10222 Paradise Boulevard, right down the street from the Treasure Bay. I do like the ideas that you did come up with, I have one suggestion for the golfing, why can't you do like an intermediate putt-putt golf and regular golf? Because we used to have putt-putt golf here in Treasure Island, and it is gone now, I used to. I used to take my kids there when they were little, and I used to go there when I was younger. And it was fantastic. Everybody had a good time. If you want to go play putt-putt golf now, you either have to go to Madeira Beach or find someplace else to go to. So, I do like that idea. The splash pad would be fantastic for the small kids. I get that. The concert thing, it's only, it's not going to be like concert concerts because, you know, you've got the noise from all that. So, that's the one thing that I do have a question about is the concerts and noise and what time it would be done. But everything else...
That's what I said, not Aerosmith.
Yes, I know, but I'm just...
And maybe like four to eight, four to seven.
I know, I get it, I get it, I get it. But I like the idea that when we did the Rock Around the Clock, and we do Rock Around the Clock again this year. That was great last year. That was enjoyable, everybody had a great time. I loved getting out to go and do something, so. But to do something a little bit more with Treasure Bay, I get it, it's a good idea. It's just, you know, the noise, parking, you know, I do get that people will ride bikes, they'll walk, whatnot, but it's just all of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Pat Patterson?
I'm Pat Patterson, I live on Sandy Hook Road, right about where the old number nine hole was. Okay, the idea of putting in this amphitheater at Treasure Bay and these other wonderful things that have started here, you're recycling a rather tired, old idea that was presented in 2017 at a reimagining of Treasure Bay. The results of the meeting, where maybe 100 people were there, showed that the concept of a amphitheater there was at the bottom of the list of preferences. And these were the way they were counted out. That was, at the bottom of the list also was fitness equipment, the fishing pier, boardwalk and trail. They were the least desirable from the people who attended, the voters in this town. So, the number one priority in 2017 was the restoration of the golf course. So, I'm to assume that the staff or commission didn't really like that answer and came around to another workshop in 2021, asking the same questions, a little more organized. It was held over here at the old city hall. The results were almost the same, except in 2021, the interest in the pavilion was even less. It was the lowest preference for the people who attended the reimagining of Treasure Bay. The lowest of support of any amenity. It was really a race to the bottom, kayak launch and walking trail kept amphitheater company in that bucket of real rejects. And once again, the restoration or redesign of the golf course was the number one preference of the voters. So, both in 2017 and in 2021, interested citizens participated in meetings and expressed their will to restore the golf course. Both times, staff and commission did not choose to listen or rejected without comment the will of the voters. That's further confirmed by the fact that we now have a kayak rental and launch concession, a fishing dock being built, and 20,000 square feet of concrete walkway.
I'm going to need to cut you off. Your two minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
John, am I allowed to say something real fast?
Sure.
Can, I just want to make one comment about the amphitheater, at least the way that I'm thinking about it. Like, I'm thinking like, I'm thinking like a concrete pad with a grass berm around it, where like you put your blanket down and maybe listen to a local band play some music. I'm not talking about building an amphitheater or having seats or even having a structure. I'm basically talking about a berm with a concrete pad at the, at least that was my thought. I mean, I'm not talking about building a huge amphitheater.
Thank you. Amanda Dietz?
My name is Mandy Dietz. I am also on Sandy Hook Road on the ninth fairway or what was once the ninth fairway. I want to put my comments out here from a couple of perspectives. One is a resident of Paradise Island, one is a resident of Treasure Island, and then one as someone who has led and facilitated public and private planning activities and execution for about 40 years. As a resident of Paradise Island and the village specifically, I am opposed to portions of this, as you've already articulated, we have some of these that are already in place. So, the items in particular for me are the, whatever you call, the band shell, the clubhouse with the restaurant and bar. I'll come back and talk about the golf part of it, but some golf solution, I think there's a compromise there that is reasonable and not overly crowded. Anyway, I think it's, the challenges as a resident are that it puts an unmanageable traffic and parking burden in a relatively small residential community. If it's successful, I mean, you talk about, well, it's not going to be anything big, but if we want to do this, I assume you're doing this because it is a revenue generating opportunity. And if that's the case, then you are going to have the crowds, and that's going to be significant ingress and egress issues, damage to residential properties because of the illegal parking, and I think that brings along with it the potential safety risks. And I'm not crazy about all the sound, but we'll move on from there. The other part of this, from my perspective, is sort of a process comment. I've been through, went out to the website, I've seen the 20 to 25 strategic plan. Unfortunately, there's nothing on the website that provides an update on the performance metrics since March 2023 or a new plan for beyond 2025. There also does not appear to be any updated information related to a master park plan, and so I find no link for that. So, just real quickly, I would expect any solution to have a verifiable cost benefit analysis, an impact analysis, and that anything we do is in alignment with the strategic plan and a master park plan. Anything short of that, I think, is dereliction of duty. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Barbara Munoz?
Hi, my name is Barbara Munoz. I live at the Village of Paradise Island, and you've heard from me many, many times talking about the same old stuff. I want to give kudos to Arden because he listens to the residents. I'm going to give kudos to Pat because Pat went over the history, and I think that it is irresponsible for the commissioners to start from new and not look at what's happened since 2017 through 2025. The reason that the golf course wasn't taken care of was because it was to be replaced. The budget came in much higher than they said, but I didn't hear one person go back and say, this is the budget you guys have to work with when we went to all these consultants, and please present what fits in this budget. So, when the budget was a little bit too high, everybody dropped the ball again, and here we are. I live on, like I said, at the village. Personally, I think we should knock down the ball field on the Isle of Capri and put the bandstand there, because then it affects you and not us that live on the Isle of... The other thing I'd just like to say is, first off, when we do have bands, we set up a stage on the beach. There's plenty of places to throw a blanket out and have everybody listen to the concert. We don't have to maintain anything. There's plenty of parking. It's downtown where people can go and get something to eat or drink from our businesses that we're trying to get repopulated. Putting it on, in an area where it's all residential, you guys are not even taking into consideration causeway aisles, because they're there too. I used to live right by Gators, and it was damn loud when they played music out there. It's my backyard. I can tell you when they're playing tennis out there, there's no parking spots, just for playing tennis. I don't know where you think all these extra parking spots are going to come from. Is that my time?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. Marie, Barbara?
We went from five to three, now to two. Good evening, mayor, commissioner, here we are again. I came here really, I think the focus now, I see a little difference, I was opposed to the amphitheater, but now the focus, of course, should be on the environment and preserving the natural environment with the manatee grate that they're building there and the sea grass that they're going to have along there. They have the oyster beds there with, you know, traps and that. And so, it's opposed, they want this natural environment, they want to preserve this here. And we thought it was a good idea to have coincidental golfing with the walkway and the pedestrians, you know, nobody's against that. We want people to use that, but it's, I think you have to do it by periods of this, of timing. This time, you play the golf, this time you don't. And every, you know, I may come into the meetings, I guess, this time, because I've known you for probably 25 or so years, but I think that, you know, all the, you can't afford all this. The way I, you know, you come to meeting after meeting and talk about taxes and taxes, and then, you know, you're spending too much money on this, and the consulting, and the, oh my gosh, it was so much, you know, compared to when we had tolls. We didn't have all this hoop block, because that was such a good source of revenue. But anyway, getting back to, I like the idea of preserving it, but remember, some of you, remember, we had the, we had a swimming pool, and then we had the children's equipment, playground equipment, and then we had all that empty space where the children's playground is? That maybe could be moved back and maybe have extra spots there in the front, just next to the other parking lot, something like that. And remember, all the events with, you know, Bill Edwards, okay? Did we mention that name? He had all the concerts that he used to put out here. He didn't have Aerosmith, but he did have, he did have one of the Aerosmith people out here, and he did have America, you know, I don't know, other big bands out there. They were always on the beach. The beach is the best place for this kind of events. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Lauren Doak?
Thank you, this is my first time attending the meeting. I live at Haven Point, which is in the townhouses, but to the vice mayor, you mentioned that where you put the workout stuff, is that in where the golfers would be golfing? Would people get...
It's already there, just for the record. The workout stuff's already there.
Would they get hit with the balls?
It's by the kayak launch.
So, it's outside of the golf course?
It's outside of the golf course.
So, that's irrelevant. And I guess I didn't know the town was interested in making money, thought we were a nonprofit organization. But I'm for the golf course, and to your point, I used to play there, and it was in very nice condition. And I think once in 2017, 18, when this all, whoever was responsible for taking care of it, didn't take care of it. I played on it, I don't know, before you started construction, and it was in awful, awful shape. Like, that person should be fired, whoever is responsible for taking care of it. You're laughing, but that's why, nobody, you know, he's giving this 39 people a day, well, that's why. Who wants to go, the greens were dirt. I don't want to play, how do you putt in dirt? Did you ever play on it?
No, I heard it was in bad shape. I just know it was that bad.
And then you talk about the farmer's market. Well, we have the farmer's market right here, in the center of town. That's a perfect location for the farmer's market. Why would you want to move it up there? Well, keep it here where the businesses are. You should be interested in stimulating the businesses. You want an amphitheater? Put it right here on this, right here.
Let her finish.
I've gone to Cory Ave, seven to nine, and where do you think those people go? To the bars. So, I don't know why the town is so concerned about making money. It should be concerned about uplifting these businesses that were hit so hard from the hurricane. And I do, I do think there's a compromise to be had on some of this stuff, but for you to say people are going to be hit with golf balls when you know that statement is false, is irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joan Keenan?
I live at 10355 Paradise Boulevard at Paradise Island Towers, we're adjacent to Treasure Bay. I understand that change is challenging. It's challenging for everybody. However, I implore you to look at the logistics while you're considering what you're going to do. We've heard again and again, the parking is a problem. It truly is a parking problem over there. If you're going to have all of these things, which I'm not opposed to all of these items here, but we live in a quiet community, and it's a quiet lifestyle that a lot of people there have become accustomed to. You're talking about bringing traffic through the community in a residential area where there's really no street parking, and you're not going to be able to do what you're, say you're doing. We already have the problem of parking when sanding ovations come, where people, because we're right next door, and they can walk across the parking lot, they park in our parking lot, even though we have reserved spots. So, parking is truly a problem over there. Logistically, respectfully, you're really not talking about offering something to the community, but you're really looking more at generating revenue and bringing in tourists. And that, to me, and when I say that, you know, I look at, we've got 6,500 people in this town, even if 30% of them have children, you're only talking about 1,950 children that live in the community. And if, and if you're saying 39 people went, use this a day, those children, you're talking about possibly 50 days out of the year that children will be using this. You're talking about generating revenue, and this is our community. So, you have to consider what's important to us, and we don't want our lifestyle to change. So, we don't want people speeding through our community, which we already have a problem with, regarding, is that my time?
That's your time. Thank you.
All right.
Jill Costinbader? Was I close?
Yes, you were, very good. Hi, Jill Costinbader, Treasure Sands Golf Boulevard. When are the pickleball courts going to be open at Treasure Bay? We're packed at Roselle.
I can answer that. So, when they pulled up the fencing, they did some damage around the perimeter. They've patched the fence, but there are still some areas that are a little unsafe. So, we're trying to get some contractor out there to patch it before we allow people back on the courts.
And when do you think that'll be?
We're calling to see when they can come out and give us a price, because it is an unbudgeted repair, so we're hoping to have that fixed as soon as possible. I know we'll probably start the Roselle January, so we've got a little bit of time.
Well, no, Roselle's packed. When are we, do you have an idea?
I don't.
So, it might not be before January.
I can't answer that for you.
Thank you very much. Ted Kuziak?
John, before I start my time, your clock is actually wrong.
One hour, by one hour.
You said you wanted it off by one hour. You wanted a seven o'clock. You're still going to get one.
Right.
Hi, I'm Ted Kuziak. I also live in Treasure of the Village. When I came here, I came here by happenstance. You had a farmer's market that was out here, and I stopped for the farmer's market. And then I found out there's other markets that are downtown areas. And that, to me, is the treasure. One of the treasures is drawing people in by happenstance. And you have, what did I do after I went to the farmer's market? I went to other places around, and I found out you had a really nice beach. I didn't like the fact I had to pay for parking, but I did. And now you're talking, you're raising the parking, but still, there's parking that was available. I really enjoyed that fact, and I ended up buying here because of the community that's here. I kind of thought that if there was going to be a band shell, it would be either here or it would be out on the beach, because that's where you have the room, that's where you have the space, and you could, you could flex as much as you want or as much as you need by the happenstance of people driving by, or how much advertising you're doing. Whereas, if you're going to put it out on this peninsula, I was really surprised. That's the only thing that really kind of surprised me when I saw that. I was saddened when the golf course left, because when I retired, I started to play golf at 66 years old. And I thought I would come down here with an iron and I would learn how to play with my irons. But I've done it now up north, I've gotten a little bit better, I wouldn't hit anybody's house out here. And if I did, they'd come and they'd hit me. But my time is almost up. I'd like you to think about, how do you draw people in? We're not going to draw people in happenstance, driving by down the boulevard. They're going to come here, and that's where you then help all the other restaurants, the bars, the stores. I'm thinking of everybody. That's my goal, not just one small spot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Roger, I'm not sure on the last name. Roger.
I want to start by saying I agree with just about everything that I've heard by the audience here. Couple of things I want to talk about. No one mentioned that the golf course took in 150K every year, or at least close to every year. Where is that money going? Because we won't have that without a golf course. The trail compatibility, oh, we can't have golf because of the sidewalk. Well, I was told by the board that it was definitely doable. You can't have it both ways. Tammy, let's put the band shell in your backyard and see how you like it. I've been coming here for 10 years, and this is the fourth or fifth song and dance that the commission has come up with to try to kill the golf course. And each time, the mandate from the people is, keep it. The band shell belongs in this park down here. Down, down in that park, we had carnivals. We had concerts there. We had car shows, flea markets, farmer's markets. That should be the main place for activities, not in my backyard. Parking, please explain to me where these extra parking, come up here and show me where the extra parking space is going to be. You can't do that, can you?
That's not going to happen. We're not getting up, so please.
Okay, I'll come over here.
No, you, we need you at the mic.
I just want to know where this extra parking is going to be. You can't. No further questions.
Thank you. Mark Houghey.
Good evening, Mark Houghey, District 3. And Mr. Suzanne is still not sharing my values or my interests in District 3.
Please.
Mayor, I go back about as far as you do on what's been going on with Treasure Bay. And I, because of the limit of time, I certainly would direct any of the public who want to see a good history of it. On May 20th, in this very room, Ms. Hayduk had a very detailed history of what's been going on from that very beginning, when USF had it as a student project, and where it has gone to. I would refer everybody to go look at that, at all the iterations that have taken place. What I haven't heard up here, and believe me, we need vision. We certainly do. And in fact, Lisa will pass around a vision that was being worked on actively by Citizens Voice Treasure Island more than 20 months ago. But obviously, the hurricane came, so it just got put on the side. Nonetheless, but what I haven't heard is about the financial due diligence, the financial due diligence. A few key numbers. The living shoreline up to this point was budgeted for $2,545,000. Our grants were only $1,874,000. So we already had a shortfall that the taxpayers had to pay to get it to this point. Obviously, then we paid another 120 for the collapsed area. Bottom line, based on all of that, we're almost $900,000 underwater with the living shoreline as it is. So why I bring that up? Truly water over the dam. But what about any vision for major improvements? The key is going to be the due diligence, whether it's privately funded, whether it's public-private, whether the city decides to fund it. There has got to be some strenuous due diligence before anything's done. Please, make sure it's not dumped on the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Robert Baszo.
Evening, Robert Baszo, District 1. Commissioner Clog dated himself by mentioning Aerosmith. I mean, I didn't know you were that old. Kudos of, kudos Commissioner Vasquez for really, really showing the initiative to get this meeting together. I think it's important. The history of, we all know the history of Treasure Bay. It should be the center of excellence for, for, for the, for the island. I believe in compromise. I think that compromise is important. I'm not, I'm not a golfer. I'm not good enough to be a golfer. I would probably hurt myself doing it. So it does need to be, it does need to be a compromise. One of the issues, of course, that Mark, I hate following Marcus, he's probably one of the best speakers I've heard in my entire career, is revenue. And I think all activities at Treasure Bay need to be revenue-neutral. I know tennis certainly probably makes money. I know pickleball is neutral. I've heard stories that golf has been heavily in the red for years. I've heard other people tell me it's in the black. It'd be nice to know that. So a master plan is important, a parking plan is important. Can we handle golf? I think golf is a great sport. A lot of history there. If we could accommodate golf, great. If it could be revenue-neutral, terrific. But I congratulate Commissioner Vasquez for bringing this out to our attention. It's not a new plan, but you had the guts to bring it to us today and start the dialogue. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will close public comment, and we will also close out the workshop, and we will start our meeting. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
We're actually not, I know there was miscommunication. It's, it's okay. I just wanted to, I think a few of us wanted to make comments after hearing public comment. I think we do have the numbers on the golf course, and I don't, I don't know that we have them right now. I know that I have heard, before I was commissioner, so this is back, we're going back, because I was in the meetings in 2017, and I was all part of that when that was happening. But if I recall, and do not quote me on this, but I can get the actual numbers, but if I recall, it was costing us approximately $225,000 a year back then to run the golf course and maintain the golf course. So we were definitely running in the red. Again, that is from 2017, so I'm trying to pull that out of my memory. I will try to get those numbers. I'll work with Victor and you, Kathy, and I'll try to come up so that I can actually have those numbers to address that. One of the big things I want to say is, that's why we're having a workshop. It's to have conversation. These are ideas, you know. I know some people feel like they need to personally attack me, and that's okay. I have broad shoulders. This is conversation. And maybe the band shell would be better in Triangle Park. Maybe, I mean, again, the, the golf, putting pop stroke is because that's something you can easily Google to use as a reference. Instead of two acres, maybe it's three acres, whatever. That's why we have workshops. It's not to yell at each other. It's not to get mad at each other. It is to have conversation so that everybody's happy, or at least, hopefully, we can come to a compromise to where most people are happy, and that it just makes our community better. So I just want to make that really clear. Workshops, that's what they're here for. They're here to have conversation. And I'm really glad that everybody showed up, and that's what we did. We had a conversation, and I'm, I'm very happy about that. What I don't want to happen is for this to just be a conversation and die. We have to start moving forward. We have to do this. We can't wait. You know, it is just sitting there, deteriorating, deteriorating, and, and it's not going to get any better. So we need to continue these conversations until we do come up with that compromise, so that we can give guidance to staff to know what we're going to do. Because until then, we're just putting a Band-Aid on it, and that's not what we need to do, because the problem with a lot of things is, is it keeps getting kicked down the road. So think about this. Maybe this opened, because again, I know the rumors are out there, and I know everything, and hopefully, this at least helped dispel some of those rumors. But this is an idea. Let's work together as a community. Let's not get mad at each other over it. Let's come up with a compromise that's going to make the majority of the people happy. And that's all I'm asking for. But thank you guys for all of your input tonight.
So the, the reason I didn't want the meeting gavelled down is for that same reason. I think we need to come to some sort of consensus, collaboration agreement out here. From my perspective, to me, you can't, you can't really decide or do anything unless you can see it. So my, my personal suggestion would be, before I go to my suggestion, I could care less if there's a band shell out there or not. I, I thought maybe four, four times a year, we could have a little concert out there under the stars, again, on a, on a grass, grassy knoll, you know, but if, if people are vehemently against that, that's fine. I could care less if it's there or not. But my question, my suggestion would be, could we come up somehow, maybe without spending a lot of money, maybe even Gary can do it, with like five different options for, for Treasure Bay? That's a picture that residents can look at, where maybe one just has the golf course. Maybe one has half golf course, half putting thing. Maybe one has smaller putting and golf, and then a lot more pickleball and whatever. And get five things to look at, and see if there's a compromise that can be made, that maybe one of those five, 75% of the, 80% of the community agrees on. Now, that would be my suggestion, because, you know, again, I, I think there's, I've heard some people out here mention compromise. I don't want to have zero type of any golfing stuff out there at all, that never be, would never be my, you know, my wish. So can we somehow come up with five or six options and start looking at them, and see if there's stuff that we can all here agree on? I mean, that would be, that would be my suggestion.
I have a question for Charles. Can we do like a workshop setting, just like this one, just for Treasure Bay, in the public, and not do what we've done in the, in the past? Like, at the clubhouse, we've had the SPC.
USF.
Was that?
USF was at the clubhouse.
USF and the SPC. Yeah, with the whiteboards, and we're spitballing ideas, but a wide-open meeting in the public, and something that we could give staff direction to look into, and kind of do a master plan, and move forward. And, you know, and, and it has to be fiscally responsible as well. It can't be, you know, I'm not a golfer. I played basketball at the Treasure Bay, that's about it. But I think we got to move forward, because we're just delaying for, for decades. So that's, those are my thoughts on it.
Are you thinking like a town hall?
Yeah, like a town hall.
Like a town hall. Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought. Yeah.
Town hall right here.
Oh, okay. So here's what I'm going to do. First meeting in December, bring you your list of priorities that you all have given me, and kind of consensus of what I've heard, talked about. I've had each department come up with their top five things that they're working on, and we'll put Treasure Bay on there, and then you can rearrange the priorities. And we'll do it all in a timely manner, but in a sequential manner, and you guys can give me your priorities. We, we have a lot of them. We're going to talk about some of them tonight. If we hire a master planner down the road, or next meeting, or whenever, they could master plan Treasure Bay in the downtown area. So I'm, I'm all for doing all of it, just so we do it in an orderly manner, and we all agree on what we're working on next with the staff that we actually have able to work all these ideas.
Real quickly, the only thing I'd like to add to, to the discussion, and I agree with my colleagues, I think it's good that we've had this discussion. We've, we've kicked this thing down the road so many times, and then, and we were heading in that direction again. But we do need to make a decision what we're going to do with that property. I would just like some, some comfort level in knowing that it's not the five of us that they're going to be making that decision, that ultimately, the residents, the, will make the decision on what we do with that, not, not this commission. That's all I have.
That was the reason I brought up five drawings and showing them to the residents. I mean, that, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to unilaterally make this decision. I mean, I, that, I'm not doing that.
And 100%, that's why I wanted to put it on the workshop today. And I think that's kind of what you were leading to, Arthur, is with the town hall, because it's, it's kind of like this, but it's a little more of a open forum. But I think if we took that idea, and your idea of coming up maybe with a few different ideas, and have pretty pictures, everybody likes pretty pictures, it would give people a little bit better of an idea. So I, I agree down the road. And I don't think any of us, I mean, I think all of us, again, that's why we want to have these discussions, but I just don't want it to die here, because that's what's happened before.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that our parks need to make a profit. Parks are amenities to the residents, and that, that's all it is. I mean, we have beautiful land in a couple places, and what we need to do is take advantage of it and push forward with everything, trying to incorporate, you know, all of our residents. But no, it's, it's not about the money. I mean, yes, we don't have endless money, but it's not about the money. Like I said, these are amenities to our residents, and, and that's truly what it needs to be. And, and hopefully, we'll get there. So with that, I am now going to gavel this workshop closed.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
...building, there's been some more. Mr. Volnek has worked tirelessly to bring together a plan that makes sense, that meets our needs, that's fiscally responsible, that uses property we already own, et cetera, et cetera. So with no further ado, I'm gonna yield my city manager report to an update on this, but let a guy that actually builds buildings give it to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Gary Volnek, Director of Public Works. It's gonna be a hard show to follow after that Treasure Bay discussion. There was a lot of interesting ideas and things, but I'm here to talk to about ideas for the 108th Avenue site. I think we've got some interesting, good concepts we can discuss. Here's the property here. Approximately 3.6 acres. Former site of Public Works Yard, Master Pump Station, City Hall, Treasure, Public Police and Fire. I'm gonna go ahead and walk through several ideas. Some of the things, the main thing is the public safety complex. We wanna consider, we want you to consider that as a site for the police and fire facility. But also, we've got the master pump station there, the Public Works Yard. There are other improvements that have to be made, and that would be the seawall is aging. Before we go ahead and spend millions of dollars on improvements, we wanna make sure we have a good foundation, a good edge for our waterfront there. Vice Mayor Vasquez mentioned about a fueling facility for our residents to go ahead and be able to pull up and buy fuel for their boats. So we wanna look at that, and also replacing the marina dockage and possibly a ferry landing. This is, this is a conceptual idea of how we can lay out these facilities. Centrally is, in red is the, is the, the public safety complex, and then in the purple are the public works facilities, and then the blue is the master pump station. The, the fire station and police station would be elevated. They would be a two-story structure, and the garage would be at grade. It would allow for drive-through for the fire vehicles. I've worked with Chief Barr on the, the length of it is deep enough to double-stack vehicles. So, so that's one of the things he wanted to have. So we've got enough turning radius, and they can do the drive-through facility, and we've also compressed the site, working to get the width as narrow as possible, to use as little land as, as, but yet keep it functional. In the purple, the blue, excuse me, the, the, the purple elevated field office, it's a 30 by 40 small building to house training, some offices and a kitchen and bathrooms for the, for the staff. The garage would be a steel building, two-bay garage to allow us to perform maintenance on, on the vehicles that the city maintains. And then the storage facility, that's actually an existing block. We're gonna go ahead and gut it and re-roof it and reuse that. The pump station, we've relocated it to the west of the site to try and make as much of it available for parking and driving, driving access. The, the sites are connected. There's a gate shown between them, but that would roll open. We could actually drive vehicles if a police car needed to get some, some work done on it, they could bring it to the yard, and we can go ahead and service it in this manner. Here's a, just a massing diagram or view that, that shows the relative size, how they would stand on the streets, the, the public safety facility and the other. Again, it's very crude, it's just, but it gives you an idea of what these would look like and how they would be situated on the site. Now, the architect will go ahead and make it pretty and everything, but this is just, you can see the elevation of the, of the structure. There may be some wing walls to, to close out the, the, the open area below, but you can see how the fire trucks will be able to drive on through. In addition, we would go ahead and propose to put a seawall in, to replace the existing one. The, before we go ahead and put docks in, you'd have to go ahead and do this. We've got a new dock facility that would handle the police, fire, and public works needs, and also the public fueling facility. It could be manned by public works staff to go ahead and, and serve that. Then farther down to the west, we've got the 16-day docks that provide slippage for public use, and also a ferry landing if we are able to, to work out something in that regard. This whole oper, all those activities take up about 1.6 acres, so it leaves us with two acres of land, more or less, that's, that's remaining for, for possible use. Now, how do we get there? We would, first of all, if you decide you'd like to pursue this, you'd have to rescind a previous resolution that was approved by the commission that established, that set the, the fire station right out here at the City Hall facility. So that, that would have to be changed, and we go ahead and proceed in that way. But as far as the public safety complex, recommending a design-build, single-entity, project-delivery method. I believe that this would be faster delivery. We can save some costs by having the architect and the contractor work together to economize and value-engineer it right from the get-go, and it'll also allow us to overlap some of the construct, like, they can start site work before we have all the, the lights exactly laid out and every window exactly perfect. So we, I feel that on the outside, I'd like to have it finished by April 27. The master pump station, that design's already underway. We hope to have the, we're scheduled to have it done, the design completed before the end of the year here, and going to, going to construction early of '26, and it'll be finished before the end of the year, the 26th. The Public Works Yard, we've requested a proposal for the design of that. The schedule would have awarding the construction in spring of next year, and again, finishing by the end of '26. The seawall, we've got the same contract consultants putting together a proposal to have the seawall done. It'll be, as I mentioned, it'll be placed adjacent to the existing seawall. That minimizes the amount of permitting and environmental work that has to be conducted on it. And then the fueling facility, the same sort of thing. Need the, you know, Department of Revenue license. We've got a Department of Agriculture's involved, and FDEP will be involved with that. These will all be going on concurrently in 2026. And then the same with the, the dockage. We need to go ahead and renew our lease on the city marina portion. We need to get a new land, submerged land lease on the fueling, the public fueling facility portion, and the, all this work will be completed during the 2026. The remaining acres, that leaves 200, 2 acres roughly to, for the commission to go ahead and evaluate opportunities and just decide what you'd like to do with it. Public, private, combination. If, if you do want to pursue, you know, some sort of lease or sale of the property, that would take a referendum, but that's something that can be, you know, discussed, and you can decide how you'd like to proceed with that. So that, that sort of wraps up the discussion. I went through very quickly. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
There's one. You showed us that you're gonna build a new public works facility. Does that have adequate shower facilities for the, the folks working in the field?
We do not have shower facilities programmed in it, but it's actually hasn't been, you know, physically designed. That can be done. We found that most of the guys would rather just rinse off and go home and change.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's what we found. Now, we can go ahead and put it out, a little, a small outdoor, kind of a, you know, rinse-down shower, if we, you know, we can, we can go ahead and incorporate that. But those kind of things will be worked out when we get the architect to really, you know, flesh out the design, and I'll begin with the staff and getting their direct input into it.
I think you've done great work. I mean, it, it's very impressive, but do we have any, any costs at this point, or?
Well, the, the master pump station has, has some grants. The, the, you're talking about all of it, bits and pieces?
Just bits and pieces of, but?
Right. The, the thing is, I just rely on Victor, our Fidesz Director, but the, the, the cost of, of, of the, the, the public safety facility is the most expensive item we're gonna, we're gonna deal with. We would go ahead and, as a design-build contract, we would do a proposal that would combine qualifications and pricing, and we would evaluate that contractor and look at the costs of what it's gonna be, but that's the biggest cost. The Public Works Yard itself, the, the engineered metal buildings are not that expensive. Even the, even the field office that's elevated is gonna be an engineered metal building on top of a, just an elevated concrete slab. Keeping the costs, it's gonna be very utilitarian. It'll be nice, but it's, it's, we're, we're doing that very inexpensively. I would say the, the next most expensive thing would be the seawall. That could be, you know, $800,000 to $1 million of seawall work along there. But, you know, when you're gonna spend, you know, $8 to $10 million on a public safety facility, you wanna make sure that your seawall is in good shape, that, that it's adjacent to.
So that $8 to $10 million you just referenced, before it was, we were hearing it was $12 million. Do we, are we confident, or somewhat confident, that we're gonna be able to do it, and?
Well, I mean, I've talked to contractors, and I wouldn't have said that number if I did feel we, we could attain it. So I, 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 I don't, we're not gonna pay $1,000 a foot, but it's gonna be, it's not gonna be cheap either, though. It's, it's, we want it to last, you know, 50 years. We wanna give, you know, fire and police the adequate resources to do their job, and it, it, it's, it's not gonna be, it'll be cat, it'll be raided building, but it, I don't think we're gonna have people there during a, a big storm. We probably would evacuate it. It'll be ready to get, you know, get back to day, day one, hour one. It'll be ready to go. It'll have a generator and all that, but I, it, it's gonna be a tremendous facility when we get done with it.
Great, thank you.
So, I've always heard that you build really nice stuff fairly inexpensively. So I guess my question is, we had, we had like money set aside for pump station, all a lot, public works building, all these different things, right? So, I mean, is it possible that you have a estimate that when you add all those things up, it's a lot less than, you know, what we had budgeted, and that covers some of the public safety building? Or, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to find out, like, again, that's one thing John brought up. We see everything here but numbers, so I'm just wondering, like, budget, like be something that said, budget for all these five or whatever things that were there, and then this is what you think you can do it for? I mean, I know, I know you can't guarantee it, but guess, guesstimate, you know?
You know, I'll be honest with you. I was only supposed to talk about the public safety facility, and I threw in all the others because I thought, we need to get these out in front of you. It's, it's all part and parcel, and, and the way the site fits, I wanna show you that we're trying to do our best to economize the amount of land area and to make it as practical as possible. I mean, if you look right by the, in the center, there are four dots, four red squares. Those are Duke Transformers that, that would cost $680,000 to relocate. So we worked around it. We, we really tried to make this make sense for the community, make good use of the dollars, but I, I apologize, I do not have a dollar figure next to each one. The main thing was for me to convince you to, to move it to this site, or at least give you the opportunity to consider it being moved to this site, the, the fire, police facility. Because again, we have on record, we have a resolution that you voted to put it here. So that would have to change. So if you, you know, if, if, for the time being, whether it's here or there, the costs are gonna be the same as far as the, it's, it's sort of more of a location thing, but I will be happy to put a dollar value next to each one of these items and get that to the city manager to convey to all of you.
And just one, one other comment, and I'll stop, but this, this drawing here, and then can you go to the next one you had? That is all I was talking about for Treasure Bay. If we could have like five of those with five different, five different, it, it's amazing to be able to, it makes a huge difference when you can see it.
I agree.
So, I mean, so anyhow, that's what I was talking about before.
You have your marching orders, Gary.
I'd like to give out a shout-out to Sweet Sparkman, the consultant, the architectural consultant that was selected to do the building originally was gonna go over here. They, they volunteered to provide these drawings to give us an idea of what it would look like, and they did a nice job with, with, in a very quick timeframe.
And first of all, thank you on the public fuel dock, because as every boater around here knows, you go to Madera Beach. I mean, you can go to John's Pass, but usually you're waiting behind a lot of fishing boats to get in. But you either go to Madera Beach, or you go to St. Pete Beach. And the offset of the cost, just going by Madera's numbers, one pump makes a million dollars a year. And so the offset for the seawall, the docks, everything else, it wouldn't take long to pay for itself, that's for sure.
That's true.
And very, very convenient for the residents. So I'm happy to see that you were able to work that in there. That's amazing. So if I understand correct, and Gavin, I guess this would relate to you as well, in order to basically instruct staff to move forward on this, I would need to rescind the previous resolution to put it next door, and then make a motion to move forward with it on 108th? Is that correct?
Yeah, so you, you could make a motion to have staff bring back a new resolution that would cancel out the old one, or you could rescind the old one and then move forward? I mean, it, ultimately, if you're making a motion, it could be in, in the resolution that you're repealing the old resolution, so.
What would be the preference and timing?
What I had planned to do was just kinda gain a consensus buy-in from the commission tonight, and put all this into Granicus with a resolution, a motion, everything that would take care of that, and I've already subtasked that to Gary and Gavin to make the motion.
Okay.
What would do all that.
Yeah, so tonight, yeah, if you give that general kinda guidance, that'll, it won't be a surprise, but then you can have it on the agenda and the public can give input into it.
Okay.
Can we see the, the numbers before we're voting on anything? I mean, that would be like.
I think you said we're just voting on the location, 'cause right now, the vote is solid next door. So that has to be rescinded before they can move forward.
There's zero cost differences between next door and over there? That's my question, I don't know.
Well, actually, from my understanding, to get a, an emergency light put out here over the DOT roadway, it was about a half a million dollars of additional cost to put that lighting facility in here. That's to, you know, so that they get, if they have to roll, it shuts the traffic down, they can get out. So it would actually be, I believe it'd be less expensive there.
Well, I mean, that would be good to know. I mean, that helps you get your resident support, maybe, if it's less expensive. I mean, so I just wanna see some numbers with it, you know?
I'm, I'm very supportive of this as well. This is a great idea. You've shared this with me a couple of times, and it's looked better each and every time. And, and I really appreciate and respect the work that you did on this to try to pull it all together and to incorporate the additional things like the fueling station, the dock, the new docks, the new seawall, making it a, an entire package, not just one, you know, one public safety building or a public works building. So you, so you've got it all together, and I, and I, yeah, I'd love to see you, if you, if it's not too quick, to bring this back at our November 18th meeting, if that's not too quick, and.
We can bring it back on November 18th with all the resolutions to put it down there. We need to get RFQs on this street.
I understand that.
And Gary can speak to that timeline before we could give you a, a dollar figure, 'cause it'll be two or three contractors saying, yeah, I will or won't use Sweet Sparkman as my architect. I wanna use this guy, 'cause then I can guarantee a, a price in with it.
I mean, I, I guess I was trusting Gary. I wasn't looking for like a RFQ. I was looking, he's saying it's not $1,000 a foot, it's 800, or what, I mean, if that, I, I just wanted an estimate on, on what all of it was gonna cost. It seems like it's gonna cost less than we thought, and that's good for everything put together, and maybe that adds up to like a lot, I, I, I don't know. Again, I haven't seen any numbers, so I don't know. I'm, I'm saying it sounds positive to me, I just would like to see it.
So you're, you are gonna bring back the resolution at the next meeting, then, correct?
I can bring you back.
To just move locations?
I'm gonna defer to Gary on when we can have some numbers that anybody's comfortable giving.
I'm not talking about numbers. I'm talking about to do away with the old resolution.
With the rest of it, yes, ma'am, we can bring it back on November 18th. We've got most of the big pieces.
'Cause I do understand it has to go to RFQ and all of that, so.
I can try to get something together by the 18th, but I, I feel by the, is it December, what's the first meeting, December? Fourth?
Second.
Now, we could.
I'm sorry, tonight's the fourth.
December, I, I feel like by December 2nd, I could get you a, you know, relative numbers for each of these items.
That'd be perfect. Have you wanted on December 2nd with some numbers?
I'm for doing the resolution at the next meeting, because all that is, is moving locations.
Right.
So I'm okay with that.
I agree.
And then we can get numbers on the December meeting.
Do we have everything you need?
Yes, I just mostly, I never want you to be surprised, and that was a lot, so I wanted to show it to you before I threw it on an agenda.
Very good work.
Yeah, well, I wish I could say I did very much.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Great job, Gary.
All your hard work.
Thank you, Gary. All right, we're gonna move into public comments.
I've got just one, one more quick slide. Commissioner Clark had asked about for a TMM update. So we've been working through a much simpler drainage manual to address drain and fill. We're about 80% complete. Simultaneously, we're working to modify our codes to meet the simplified drainage plan. Tonight, what we need from you, which is on the agenda later, is a 60-day extension to keep our seawall and single-family home permits, which have increased in their quickness of getting approved. So that was a great move that y'all made back, I think, on September 18th. We appreciate that, and my hope is to have all this batten down in very, very early 2026. It may or may not require another 60-day extension, but there's just a lot of work to be done here, and the good news is, we're doing a lot of work pretty quickly for government, actually.
Is there a limit to how many 60-day extensions we can do, or no? You just have to vote on it each time, and if it's permanent, then it has to go through the two ordinances, so, okay.
My assumption, if I bring you like five or six of them, you're gonna be like, so I'm trying to get it done pretty quick.
I just don't want it to be like, we can't do it, and then we don't, doesn't get done. That was my concern, so.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to public comments for non-agenda items. The first one is Chaplain Andy.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, all my friends, neighbors here of Treasure Island. Two weeks ago, I told you about a charity event that we are doing to raise awareness and procure adult diapers. We are off to a rousing start. Stuff is already coming in, and we haven't even started. We are about to run into a Tampa Bay Times blitz that we are going to be doing over a three-week period. We will be in the newspaper, we will be in the beacons, and we will also be all over the internet. We also have various entities that are gonna help us with the internet and what we're going to be doing there. We have our Big Breakfast kickoff November 12th at 8:00 a.m. I expect you all to come. So what we need now, it's on the fifth floor, so what we need now, what I need now, is for you to go to the mountaintop with us. Go up to that mountain. We are going up to the mountaintop. We will raise 1,000 bags of adult diapers. And if you're too tired of it all, too sick of it all, had it all, or just stuck in that stupid place where stupid people go to win stupid prizes, jump on our backs, and we will take you to the mountaintop, and we will succeed, and we will get 1,000 bags of diapers. We will link arms and go to that mountaintop, and if you need help, go talk to Bobby Shang. Jump on Chief Barkley's back, jump on Captain Savarisa's back, jump on Chief Barr's back, jump on Deputy Fire Chief Brennan's back, and we will take you to the mountaintop. When everything is a struggle, just think of the view. Think of what it looks like. Come and do the next right thing, and show the world what little old, beat-up, battered, tired Treasure Island can do. You can choose to live a life of blame, or you can choose to live a life of blessing. Do the next right thing. Choose to change the world with us. Give me 20 seconds of insane courage, and I promise you, something great is going to happen, and it will change your everlasting soul. Please come help us and make it a little bit easier for so many people. Come to the mountaintop. Go wild for a while. Put on your hiking boots, 'cause the world's a better place in hiking boots. Every time we go to the mountaintop, we find more than we seek. The best view comes from the hardest climb, and then, and only then, we can make God smile. Come with us. Go to the mountaintop. If you need me, you can find me in the mountains. May your trails be crooked, winding, and lonesome, and even at times dangerous, leading you to the most amazing views. May your mountains rise into and above the clouds. Our expedition starts November 12th, 8:00 a.m., fifth floor, and we need your help to climb this mountain. Thank you all for listening. Peace be with you all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Derry Smith?
I wanted to let you know, we have over 600 Treasure Island resident signatures on petition against height and density. Their addresses have been vetted, and when we hit 650, which I'm hoping we'll be doing in the next few days, that'll be 10% of the city's population. And remember, we're collecting this many signatures when many of the island are still displaced. Many homes are empty, and I think this is a strong message to the commission that the residents don't want the increase. But the next thing I have to say is directed to you, Mayor Dr. History's watching you. I fear that you are supporting increased height and density because you believe you're doing something good for the city, that in your mind, the increase will be beautiful. The downtown district will be beautiful, the Gulffront hotels will be beautiful. Maybe you go to sleep at night thinking how well the citizens of Treasure Island will remember you, and how they will remember you always for these changes. And you're correct that we will remember you always for the changes, but it won't be how you hope. I truly believe that you want to be remembered fondly and with respect. I fear that will not be the case if you vote with Commissioner Vasquez and Sazan. Your name will be forever connected with two commissioners that have terrible ethical issues with the residents here, and you will be remembered as part of the group that corrupted our beloved island. There is still time for you to be remembered as a hero. Stand up for us. Stop the increased height and density. Allow developers to develop according to the restrictions we have now. That's all we ask. Do that, and you will go down in history as a great mayor. I hope you choose that path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grant Smith?
Grant Smith, Sunset Beach. I'd like to address the recent heightened density ordinances under consideration, specifically the due diligence process being followed by the staff and commissioners. I'd like to preface my comments by acknowledging the personal sacrifice the commissioners make to serve the residents of Treasure Island. It's admirable that as representatives of your various districts, you're willing to set aside your personal interests, including potential financial gains for yourself, families, friends, or business associates to prioritize the interests of the residents. Thank you for your sacrifice and the integrity you bring to your roles. At a previous commission meeting, representatives from the Thunderbird submitted the resume of their planner into the record to establish the planner's expertise. I'd like to submit the following document to the clerk identifying evidence-based or best practices in evaluating the need for an ordinance, zoning, or change to a building code based on the request from a developer. The document includes a partial list of tasks, a brief description of each, and the citation identifying the source of the information, whether it's a textbook, a government publication, a trade publication, or a peer-reviewed journal article. It provides a summary of the methods and information that should be obtained as part of a rigorous due diligence process. Certainly, the magnitude of the change is being considered. With increases of height in 33% or more, density increases of 100% or more impacting a large portion of our beachfront, as well as portions east of Gulf Boulevard, merit a rigorous due diligence process. Prior to making any changes, I urge the commission to invest the time and effort in best practices to obtain the information necessary and share it with residents to answer the following questions. One, are the developers' claims of financial hardship under the current guidelines valid? Two, what's the cost to the municipality and residents in terms of increased services, infrastructure, et cetera? Three, how did the proposed changes benefit the residents of Treasure Island? To date, the arguments supporting the changes presented by the developer staff and proponents of the request do not include valid information supporting their claims. Both the sources of the information and the granularity or specificity of the information are problematic. As representatives of the residents who overwhelmingly favor. As Representatives of the residents who overwhelmingly favor limited smart development, please take the time necessary to implement the best practices as part of a due diligence process. To change the ordinance with incomplete or deficient information would be counter to your commitment to the residents, unprincipled, and a dereliction of your duty. I refuse to believe that individuals who have committed to public service with your experience, your intellect, your character, would proceed in a reckless manner to mollycoddle developers. You know what the right path is. The right time to do the right thing is always right now. Please do the due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Hendrick?
Good evening, Hendrick Bisanz, Sunset Beach, and also Sea Salt Properties. I wanted to just take an opportunity and remind everybody of one of your former best employees that became available on the job market, Renee Tarzitano, who's sitting there in the middle of the room. I'm very happy that, I'm one of the few that was happy that she was no longer here because she became available to join us at Sea Salt, and we have, ever since the storm, helped very many homeowners get back into their homes. Renee has done the same since leaving the city, and now we're a team and continue to do that type of work. So if anybody needs help getting a permit or an after-the-fact permit and become compliant, we can help.
Thank you very much. Mark Houghey?
Good evening again, Mark Houghey, District 3, and Mr. Sazan is still, doesn't represent my hopes and beliefs about District 3. Wanted to take us back a little bit to July. We welcomed Mr. Van Zant in as our new City Manager, with all the hopes that we had for his vision for fixing the city and making it more efficient. On August 5th, in this very room, at his first reading of his comments, he put up a slide telling us how he was going to address bringing in trusted confidants and skilled people to come and evaluate the CDD and determine what needed to be done in order to make that department more efficient, more effective, and more responsive to the residents. So it's been roughly almost three months, and I just put out an ask for at some point that Mr. Van Zant would then update us all, you and the community at large, with how that's going, what are the positive changes that he has envisioned, and when will we see them? So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Ron?
My name is Ron DiBiase. I'm a resident of Treasure Island, and there's a couple of thoughts that I'd like to present to you this evening. One of them is in regards to the height requirements. According to your own charter, the city cannot vote against or change increased height requirements that the citizens voted against. They can only vote to reduce the height. They cannot go against the charter except to decrease it. You cannot go against a citizen's vote from 2016 and change the height requirement. You just can't do it. It's in your own charter. The second thing I'd like to address is, why did you choose to use another firm for a city attorney when we already have one? I think we were pretty comfortable with Mr. Rollins, and if you do, if you are changing them, then I think it should go on a ballot. We should have the right to choose our representation. I don't understand it. The only thing I could see is that you're picking city attorneys that are familiar with the city, and we're going back to our old way of business, and I just don't, I can't see it. I would like to see, if we're gonna have a new city attorney, then put it on a vote, put it on a ballot, let the people vote for who they want to represent them. And that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay.
Marie Barba?
Marie Barba, resident of Sunset Paradise. Yeah, I'm here because this Board, this Commission Board, placed an ad in the paper last week. November 18th, for everybody, is a city meeting, and it's gonna be a second reading, according to the ad, on the ordinance 2025-16 and 2025-17. The ad said that this is gonna be November 18th, and this is for, those ordinances have to do with the huge amount of increase, the humongous increase proposed by the Thunderbird, and that's the hotel and motel in one of the ordinances, and the other one is for Pirate Square. So everybody should be aware of that, November 18th. Put that on your calendar. It is very disappointing to see that. That is gonna be the second reading, according to what was placed on the ad, and here we are, you know, in a debacle where there is gonna be probably a legal challenge. I guess you're not gonna be the one here, because it was Mr. Sabatini said, well, Senate Bill 718 said that we cannot, we do not have to go to referendum, and here we have stalemate, and, you know, we have the chess piece going, hey, King, you can't move. That's Bill 718. And the city's saying, no, we can move, we can put this, we have to put this on referendum because that's what our charter states. Our charter states this specifically in Article 17, 7, Section 7.07, when it says, "Any local ordinance voted into effect by the electorate pursuant to an initiative or referendum," which the heightened density was referendum, "respectively shall only be subsequently amended or repealed by the electorate at the polls." And that only addresses one ordinance that you have here, that's the 2002, 2002-04, heightened density that was voted in by the people. So we have checkmate, we have circular logic here, and nobody is addressing it here. So this is what we're gonna go, we're gonna go into, what, a lawsuit for, I don't know how long this is gonna take? Why don't you get together with these, the citizens, and say, okay, we don't like 733% increase in the density in the motel, or 100 and 233 density increase in the hotel area, or the motel's the one with the 733, okay? This is outlandish, outrageous. Why don't you take a town hall meeting and come up with something that we can all live with, calculate it out to see how many more cars and how much more traffic you're gonna bring in here, and what stress you're gonna put on the sewer systems and overflow, and come to a conclusion that we can all live with, and we probably will have to go to referendum, according to what the legal opinion is. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Is Kim Corella still here, or was that, she had filled out two cards? She left? Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, that's going to, I'm gonna close public comments, and we're going to move on, and we have approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now we're moving on to our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I just have one question on Agenda Item Number G3, the 2026 meeting schedule. The schedule for the Commission meeting for March 17th of 2026 is on St. Patrick's Day, and I don't know if that was, if that was an oversight, or if that's something that we may want to consider moving to the day after or something, but we avoided all the holidays.
Or provide Dennis, at the very least, right?
Yeah, we avoided the holidays.
Good catch, Arden.
Other than that, that was the only question I had, if we could...
I'm definitely for moving it.
Y'all want to move it to the Monday or the Wednesday or something?
I would say the Monday.
I would say the Monday. So what we're looking at is Tuesday, March 17th, striking that, and actually doing Monday, March 16th.
Okay. I agree. That's all.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
As long as there's consensus, yeah, you don't have to do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good catch.
All right, if that was the only issue with that, we will now...
Did we vote?
I'm sorry?
I don't think we voted yet.
We have not voted.
No, I didn't think so.
Yeah, no, then that's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I was lost.
Okay. Let's move on to our first Agenda Item of New Business. A quasi-judicial proceeding. Are you going to read the...
I can, yeah, so with quasi-judicial, it's just a fancy Latin word for, similar to judicial. It's not quite as stringent as the rules requiring judicial, but your decisions have to be made based on evidence. If you've had any ex parte communication, another Latin word for just outside of this chamber, you need to disclose that. If somebody has talked to you about the variance and what is coming before you, and then basically both sides present and introduce their evidence, and then you make a decision based on that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
We don't want to, the Representatives here, I think they'd at least like the opportunity to speak about it.
And we did get communication in an email, I believe it was today, from them. I know it went, it looked like it went to all the Commissioners and the Mayor.
Yes, and yeah, with that, disclosing that on the record, that you received an email, is...
Now, the applicant can make a...
Correct, the applicant certainly can. You guys can certainly make a motion to table it, but the applicant has the opportunity to speak since it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Starting off good here. Did not expect to have that kind of headwind right away. But anyways, Hendrick Bisanz, Sea Salt Properties, and I'm here representing a Sunset Beach property owner seeking a variance to rebuild a pool destroyed by Hurricane Helene. Before addressing the specific variance, I believe it is important to briefly explain why many Sunset Beach, beachfront homeowners, including the applicant, have not yet rebuilt. You know that Hurricane Helene stripped away roughly about eight feet of sand elevation, leaving many yards, and in some cases, entire lots washed out. These beachfront homes were left exposed and vulnerable to even minor weather events, and rebuilding immediately after, before renourishment of our beach, would have been irresponsible and financially reckless. This Commission will surely recall the significant effort involved in securing federal funding for beach renourishment, funds covering approximately 65% of the project, and you will recall the meeting held on January 22nd, right here, where state and county officials assured us that a new erosion control line would be recorded within months. Draft maps were shared showing where the existing 1968 line sits and where the corrected line would go. This matters because the erosion control line determines construction setbacks. The 1968 line is outdated and irregularly drawn. In some places, it sits seaward of homes; in others, it literally runs through living rooms and kitchens. The Army Corps made clear, no updated line, no federal sand. Many homeowners, again, including this applicant, understandably, now waited, not only for the beach to be renurished, but also for the new line before investing roughly a half a million dollars or more in rebuilding pools, decks, and structures. If you were in their position, knowing your buildable footprint was about to increase and stabilize, you would have done the same. And so here we are. We're simply asking to build the pool to the current erosion control line, which coincides with where the new line will place the setback anyway. The pool plans already exist and will comply fully once the new line is recorded, which we know now is imminent. This is what I shared this morning. I didn't speak to the variance at all. I shared information as to when this new line is about to be recorded. It confirms a settlement agreement has been reached, and the state representative, Mr. Weeks, has stated that the recording is expected before year end. Granted, this tonight does not create a non-compliant situation later, it simply allows the homeowner to begin rebuilding after 13 months of waiting. This is something you may not be aware of. The new line was expected to be recorded in June. It was challenged, and through a public records request, I learned why. A Treasure Island Beach Hotel property owner had a documented agreement with state and county officials dated March 2025, stating the line would accommodate his operations. The county, however, did not follow through, and instead presented a line that ignored this agreement. This property owner had every right to challenge it. The county dropped the ball on this, and guess what? Federal renourishment dollars, roughly $80 million, were lost. Homeowners were left unable to rebuild, permit processes stalled. Tourists ended up funding the bill to renourish with local taxes, tourism taxes, over $125 million. The county is not the hero in this. They cost us taxpayers about $80 million. This delay was not caused by homeowners, yet homeowners now bear the consequences. If we get to this tonight, staff will remind you, the applicant is not prevented from reasonable use of the property. There's no unnecessary hardship. With full respect to staff, I disagree. When a hurricane destroys your pool and yard, removing eight vertical feet of land, and a government-delayed boundary line has prevented you from rebuilding for over a year, sensibly, that is a hardship. When you cannot responsibly invest until a state-promised federally-required correction is recorded, that is a hardship. This variance is before you today only because the property is on the beach. This would normally go before the Planning and Zoning Board. I've spoken with three Planning and Zoning Board members in attendance tonight, one just left, and all have expressed support for this variance. That Board has consistently worked to help residents return to their homes safely and quickly, and we're asking the same from you tonight. This request does not... This request does not bend rules. It aligns with what the rules will be within weeks. It does not create an exception. It simply avoids punishing a homeowner for government delay. It does not create risk. It merely lets a resident family begin restoring their home and life. 13 months post-Helene. We respectfully ask you to approve this variance tonight and allow this family to move forward. I'm curious to see if you will still table this and push this off your desks and avoid responsibility, and I think it's a shame if you do.
So because it was on the agenda, it's good practice to allow the applicant to have their say, but if you actually want to conduct a hearing tonight, which it seemed that there was an indication you were not wanting to, but that would need to be sworn testimony, and you would want to hear from staff, the applicant, both sworn testimony, and then each, they would have the opportunity to present evidence that would be officially submitted. There's a whole process to it. So if you guys do want to consider it tonight, that's certainly fine. We would just need to kind of start with that process. My understanding is the applicant was just presenting almost like public comment, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I don't see any reason we need to table this. I shouldn't say, I do see the reason, and that's simply because it would be easiest for us to just let the ECL line take its natural course, and at that time, Mr. Bezzant would not even need a variance request. But I think he makes a valid argument. At least, he certainly convinced me, and I had not talked with him about this issue at all, up in, you know, I just heard what he had to say, but I, I think also approving this variance will allow the resident to move forward with rebuilding, because even though this, it does appear to be imminent, I did check with the county myself, I think Hendrick checked with, with the state, but I checked with the county and got a similar response from the county that, that a, an agreement had been sent to the complainant, and that they were going, you know, to, as soon as they signed it, that they would be moving forward. And that could take several weeks, but I don't see any reason why we, as a commission, need to delay this any longer, so I would like not to table this. I would like to go ahead and hear what Jesse has to say, hear Hendrick if he has any more to offer, and then, and then let's make a decision. And if we want to say no, then, I mean, if the commission wants to say no, then they can do that. I don't think tabling it is the right thing to do at this point.
I don't, I don't think that, I mean, I, I'm not going to speak for everybody else. I don't feel like we want to say no. My whole, just my opinion is, if it is going to be just a couple of weeks, and I know for the homeowner, that's awful, I get that, I 100% get that, because my pool too got destroyed in the hurricane, so I get that. My problem is, is it's government. It's not our fault, it's not Treasure Island's fault, it's Pinellas County's fault. And putting it on us to, to give a variance with a zero setback property line sets a precedence in the event, and I get it, I get that the county's moving forward with it, it's going to change, it's, you know, it's like 98% there, but we also know how government works and how the county works. So if something were to happen or to change in the next couple of weeks, but we have approved this, then we are setting a precedence at a zero, zero-foot setback, and that's my fear on it. I get not tabling it, I understand what you're saying. I am just not comfortable, especially, now, if they were saying it wasn't going to be till next summer or whatever, I'm not even saying I would feel differently, because I think that puts a lot of, it just, it's not good for Treasure Island. Again, we can't help what the county did and what they're doing and the delays. We can only help what we can. But I think approving a zero, a zero setback on a property line when it appears that it's going to be approved anyway here in the next few weeks, I just, I'm personally not comfortable with that. Only, I mean, we're talking zero.
No, I, I understand, I understand, and I, I, I did a lot of research on this subject because I wanted to.
Sure.
Make the right decision. But anyway, my question is, do we table it, or do we just openly discuss it?
I still feel like we table it, because I can tell you, even with a discussion and with it being imminent, I would, and I'm just being honest, I would still, I would, and I don't want to vote no, but I would be a no, because I'm not comfortable with approving a zero setback on something, especially when in a few weeks it appears imminent that it won't even be needed. That's, again, that's just my opinion.
Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Dr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sazan.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickey.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Second item tonight, second and final reading of ordinance 2025-04. Would you please read the, what you need to?
You're on H2, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Trying to pull it up now, let's see, there we go. An ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending the future land use map of the City of Treasure Island Comprehensive Plan for two lots associated with the Isle of Palms Park, also known as Triangle Park, located on the northeastern corner of 112th Avenue and 13th Street East. Lots four and five, which combined measure approximately .256 acres, or 11,170 square feet from residential medium RM15 to recreational open space RSO, finding the request consistent with the City of Treasure Island's Comprehensive Plan and the Forward Pinellas Countywide Plan, providing for transmittal to reviewing agencies in accordance with the requirements of the law, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective
I move to approve ordinance 2025-04, amending the future land use map of the City of Treasure Island Comprehensive Plan at this second and final reading, and transmit the amendment to the Florida Commerce in accordance with Chapter 163.3187 Florida statutes, and providing for an effective date.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, do we have any public comment? I don't believe so. Nope. So, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye. Moving on to H3, second and final reading of 2025-05.
An ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Treasure Island for two lots associated with Triangle Park located on the northeast corner of 112th and 13th, lots four and five, which combined measure approximately, is this the same one? Oh, you said 05?
05.
Okay, just very similar, so, all right. Approximately .256 acres, or 11,170 square feet from residential medium RM15 to recreational open space RSO, finding the request consistent with the City of Treasure Island's Comprehensive Plan, land development regulations, and the Forward Pinellas Countywide Plan, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-05, amending the official zoning map of the City of Treasure Island at this second and final reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? And we have no public comment. City Clerk, would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye. H4, second and final reading of ordinance 2025-26 to ban shark fishing.
An ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, creating a shark fishing ordinance to prohibit shark fishing along the beaches of the City of Treasure Island, incorporating findings, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here within, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-26 at this second and final public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, and we have no public comment. City Clerk, would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye. Next item, H5, second and final reading of ordinance 2025-27, vacating approximately 14,000 square feet of an alleyway.
An ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, approving the vacation of approximately 14,000 square feet, .3214 acres of an alleyway located between 106th and 107th Avenue, a public right-of-way to retain a utility easement over the 30-foot wide east-west alleyway to retain a pedestrian easement over the 10-foot wide north-south alleyway, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-27 at this second and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We do not have any public comment. So, City Clerk, would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye. H6, second and final reading of ordinance 2025-29, Treasure Island Code of Ethics.
An ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, enacting a code of ethics for elected and appointed officers, providing for standards of conflict, or conduct equal to or stronger than state law, providing for implementation, training, and enforcement, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve ordinance 2025-29, Treasure Island Code of Ethics at this second and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, and we do have one public comment. Robert Boz, Bozo?
I saved it. That hurt, that hurt. Rob Bozo, District 1, I, I know a lot about ethics, you know my, my career, you know what I've done. Kudos to Commissioner Dickey for raising this, it's really, really great, a great staff. I don't want to hold this up at all, I think it should be approved tonight, but a couple of things. Section 3.7, deciding on the merits, one thing about this order does not include the word residence. I think it's, it's a key word that should be here. 3.7 says commissioners will base decisions on the facts and the, and the law applying fair processes and relevant criteria. I would like to add, and when applicable, the will of their constituents, not on, not on favoritism, pressure, or irrelevant considerations. I think, I, I understand what we're trying to do here. Now, ethics and morality are the same word. Morals are what we internally guide us to making decisions. Ethics is an external, an external, some sort of a organization or commission that tells us how to provide, how to behave ethically. This is based, I mean, when you use the word self-enforcing, doesn't exist. There's, there's no organization in this country or world that has a code of ethics that's self-enforcing. Enforcing ethics has to be an external organization, like a commission, like Florida State has, for instance. So right now, there is no mechanism for the resident like us to make a comment or make a complaint. As we've all learned, because some of us have gone through the process, the county and state see us as an incorporated city as being responsible for policing our own ethics, which is why some of our complaints have not gotten, gotten approved. So I'd like you to think about, I know, I know the city attorney knows about, the city manager knows about red teaming. We've had a couple of instances of some ethics issues here. Applies one of those or two of those to this ordinance, and how would the commission act? What would we do? How would you enforce it? Somewhere, I want you to approve this tonight, but somewhere down the road, there needs probably to be some sort of a resident group, like the P&amp;Z, like code enforcement, that is involved with an attorney to look at some of these. Right now, there is no process for us to issue a complaint that's going to get attention. The county won't do it, and the state won't do it, because we're an incorporated city. So again, kudos to, to Commissioner Dickey, I want you to approve this tonight, it's a step forward, but no such thing as self-enforcing. Code of Ethics doesn't exist, but a good stab, kudos to the Commissioner Dickey for kicking this off, it's a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public comment. Is there any further discussion up here? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye. H7, second and final reading of ordinance 2025-28 to approve the fiscal year 2026 fee schedule.
An ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, establishing a fee schedule and adopting Appendix A as the City of Treasure Island fee schedule, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-28, adopting the citywide fee schedule as an Appendix 2A, Appendix A to the Code of Ordinance, to be effective December 1st, 2025, at this second and final public reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just, I just wanted to mention, I will be voting opposed to this, not because of the rate increase for the, for the wastewater increase, but for the parking increase.
All right, we do not have any public comment. Would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
No.
Mayor Dr.
Aye. All right, moving on, first reading of ordinance 2025-33, mandatory lot mowing program.
I move to table ordinance 2025-33.
So I don't know, Mr. Manager, or Mayor, how do you want?
Would you like me to just speak to it for a second?
Please.
Or give her a second?
Please do.
So we've done a lot of work on this, hashed through it again as late as this afternoon. There's going to be a lot of administration to do this kind of a program, which the best I can tell will require at least one administrator of said program that I would house in the code enforcement office. That would require an FTE and a budget amendment that I would need to bring back to you guys for your approval. We've kind of teed it up with about 200 complaints that we know of. We've used community-based volunteers that have chipped that away about 10%. I think there were 19 yards that people mitigated their own circumstance after the notice of violation, but that's only 10%, and this is only going to increase. We just hired and got on board, I think two weeks ago, a code enforcement supervisor. So just the back and forth administration of this program, keeping up with it, keeping up with the maintenance crew, which would be outsourced to cut the grass when we don't have volunteers or people don't come into compliance themselves. So I, I just think I could bring you a complete product on November 18th to, to vote in that would contain everything we need to establish something that would be effective.
So you're basically asking us to table it to the 18th?
You can adopt the resolution tonight, but I think it would, you help me out, City Attorney.
Yeah, I can give you an overview. I think the, there's a couple of changes that staff had recommended. One, instead of $100 administrative fee, $250 for the administrative fee because of the estimated time that it would take staff to do, because, so normal code enforcement, we're just code enforcing them, sending them notice, and then it comes before our code enforcement board. This is a little bit different process. What you have is, we, we will still have six inches for grass in the code enforcement under beautification, but this ordinance, the intent of it is to fall under the health, safety, and welfare police powers that the commission has, and that triggers a little bit of a different process. So if, once you get to 10 inches, it's considered a health, safety, and welfare issue because of snakes, rodents, various other things that we know in high grass can, can be a result of this. And it, it's legal to do, but what you essentially do is you have a lot of due process built in there, and you would notify the resident. and you would notify the resident. They have a chance to fix it themselves if they, and they also have a chance to do a written request to appear before either a special magistrate or the code enforcement board at that point. But if they don't fix it, then after 14 days period of time, then they have, and they've already, in theory, been noticed for the six inches, so now we're at 10 inches, then they can do an abatement, we can do an abatement process, but we don't typically do the abatement process for most code enforcement. So, that's where you're starting to get a little bit more of the administration piece of it because the city would then engage the services of either a contractor that's already on file and has gone through the proper procedures, you know, procurement procedures or public works, either or, to go out and mow and/or deal with, because it's not always just lawn mowing. There's the rodent issue. Sometimes there's trash and other things underneath some of these things. And then they have another appeals process afterwards because we then send them the bill and then attach that as a lien onto their property. And so, because of that, we, you know, went through a process of trying to make sure that this can work effectively, and it's in terms of litigation, and if someone wanted to sue, that there's those due process things built in there. Other cities do this and have varying degrees of how they do this, but as staff is discussing how to approach this, that type of thing, one of the discussions came about that it would probably need an additional person. So, you could vote some of those amendments and changes and move the process forward, and then they can bring back the staff position, or you could table it and then discuss that and bring that all forward in a future meeting.
I mean, I'm fine waiting to the next meeting, but this, to me, this is something that absolutely has to get done. I mean, I cannot walk down my street without, walk my dog anywhere without being mauled by people who are complaining about these. I mean, there's, and there's one four doors down from me that literally the door of the home has never been opened since the flood, and the place is just sitting there, and the yard is almost up to the roof. And the people that live by it say there's big snakes in there and stuff, and they're like, why aren't you getting something done? Why aren't you getting something? I'm like, I'm trying, you know, so.
I'd like to see us move forward with it, but I do have some thoughts because I did read through it. So, I was wondering if you could share the thoughts and maybe move it forward, and then based on your recommendations, bring back something else in a future meeting. So, I mean, it has to be more comprehensive, in my opinion. I think it has to include seeding or sodding the property within 14 days of demolition, unless they're starting construction within 30 days of demolition. Grass should be 6 to 8 inches maximum height and cut within 48 hours, and specifically, no removal of driveway between lot property line and pavement because there's a lot of, in the rainy season, we had a lot of puddling in that area. And I do believe daily fines should definitely be $250 per day, so. That's it.
I will say on the seeding and sodding, I had actually a contractor that lives in my neighborhood, but he's not building a house, but he has a neighbor who, well, there's actually two lots beside him, and they've been torn down and just sitting there, and it's literally a dust bowl because we haven't had any rain. And on these windy days, it is awful. I don't have that around me, but I can only imagine how horrible that is. So, on the, I didn't know, he had built a house on one of the beaches, and they required, if you aren't building back immediately, the seeding and sodding. So, that is something, I don't know if it would be on the same one or?
Yeah, that's, those are certainly some suggestions that have been made by others and could be incorporated. My recommendation would be not to kind of wedge that into the grass mowing specifically, but add that into the appropriate part of the code, and we can do that. We could certainly bring that as a separate ordinance in next meeting because you're talking demolition, whereas with the grass, we're talking an abatement process for nuisance, so. But those are good suggestions. We could certainly, if the, so maybe you could take a vote on whether you want us to incorporate those particular things into updating the code and ordinance for a future meeting, and then we could maybe address the specific amendments that you want to the lawn ordinance, like the $250 administrative fee and that type of thing. Does that?
Bless you.
Makes sense?
Yeah, makes sense.
It's all fine with me.
Do we want to table it, or do we want to continue moving?
So, what is your recommendation? Do we move it forward and?
I mean, you certainly can. What I would say is if we're going to do a whole bunch of changes, then it would need to start at the beginning again. If you're making just a tweak on the administrative fee and a few things, but mostly moving it forward, then this could function as the first reading.
I think it's very important that we move this forward and let this function at the first, as the first reading because I got a lot of issues with that, with this.
I agree. Okay, so then what? I would recommend if, you know, is do the, a motion to amend to add the $250 admin fee. And then?
I think that dollar amount is the main.
And then just understanding that it will probably require an additional person, but that doesn't necessarily need to be in the ordinance. That'll be a budget amendment and FTE at a later date, so. And then yours, we can just, you can give us direction, staff, to bring back an ordinance that affects that aspect of the code.
I think we should do the seeding and sodding thing, too. I'm good with that.
But that doesn't need to be all in the same book.
No, no, but I mean, separate. Yeah, get that going.
And we'll just bring that because we'll want to make sure that it aligns correctly in the right part of the code and that type of thing, so.
All right.
Okay.
Well, I move, I rescind my previous motion and move to approve ordinance 2025-33 on the first reading, amending the admin daily fee of $250 and to schedule a second reading and public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We have no public comment, so would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Vasquez? Aye. Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
And just to clarify, that was on the, just the amendment, so then now you would need to actually vote on the ordinance? Unless, was your motion, maybe I misheard, was it for both?
My motion included the ordinance.
Including, okay.
Yeah, it just amended the fee, the administration fee, admin fee to $250.
As long as there's unanimous approval, then that's fine, then, as long as it wins.
Let me get some clarity on one issue. It's going to, Commissioner Sazan said $250 a day. Fine, as opposed to administrative fee.
So, the administrative fee is just a flat fee that we say, this is how much it's going to cost for us to do the, essentially, the paperwork and all the process, but then there's additional hard costs that will be included. So, the actual mowing is a separate cost that will be billed based on how much that costs, purely how much it costs. Recording the lien, that'll be passed on to the homeowner, the violator, purely based on the hard cost for that. If they have to do any abatement related to, you know, rat infestation, snakes, that kind of thing, that will be passed on to the homeowner, all of that. And then the ordinance talks about, it refers to a Florida statute that allows for interest to be collected based on the recording of the lien and in accordance with the way Florida statute does that. Code enforcement, separate, is a separate process that, and we, once a board rules on a code enforcement violation, then they can come back and attach fines to this. But what will happen in this case is they'll get a notice, they'll have the, it's a different, slightly different process because it's the nuisance, and we haven't really done this with a lot of other things before. They'll get the notice, they'll have the opportunity to rectify. If they don't, we then step in. That's different than code enforcement stuff where they're just accumulating fines over time because we aren't stepping in and doing anything. We're just saying you have to do something or you're continuing to accumulate. In this case, we're stepping in and abating it, doing something about it by mowing it, by rectifying it. So, then what happens is we send them a bill. If they pay the bill, everything's good. If they don't, then that goes as a lien on their house. And then eventually, if they're non-homesteaded, then we can foreclose on their house to recoup the lien, so. Is that as clear as mud?
No, no, that's, that's very clear.
It's sort of code enforcement, but they're two different processes. That's why I said at six feet, you're in the code enforcement, or six inches, you're in the code enforcement grassland. Beautification, this is a, once you get to 10 inches of grass height, then you're suddenly in the health, safety, and welfare, and we're moving into nuisance, and then the abatement process, which is a little bit separate and different.
All right, and it sounds like what you just described, we're going to recover all of our money. The $250 administrative fee pays for a part of it. We're going to bill them for, if we have somebody go and mow it, is it going to be a lien? Sounds like there's enough severe punishments in there. Adding $250 a day indefinitely just seems like it's.
Yeah. The goal is compliance, not to start a lawn mowing company. And the goal is, yeah, the challenge is there will probably be a delay, a lag time in some cases on collection, but especially if it's non-homesteaded, ultimately, if you're an LLC and you own a house and you're trying to sell that house, and there's a cloud over it because the city, you owe the city money, they're motivated to either pay for it or do something about it. And right now, we send them notices, and there's, the code enforcement process is a lot longer process, whereas this kind of gets us to where we need to faster to clean it up, especially on the non-resident folks that are, own it but live somewhere else kind of thing, so.
Who would have the authority to waive part of the fee or some of the fee or whatever?
You guys would ultimately. If it's, if they come before you, they could come before, or you, the, but the, when they get the bill, there's also, there's two appeals processes built in, and it, the reason for that is just to make sure there's that due process to make it where if someone sues, that courts have generally, I looked, I went into depth of like, when these kinds of things are litigated, what do courts look for? And a big part of it is due process and appeals process, and there's two appeals processes. On the front end, they can appeal and say, hey, this isn't 10 inches high. It's not really a problem if they think that code enforcement got it wrong. And then on the back end, they can say, well, you know, why did the lawn guy charge $7,000 if it was? I'm not saying it would be, but they can challenge the costs that they have been accrued to. But in both cases, they have to do a written request for that, which is listed out in the ordinance. So, they have two steps where they can appeal it, but then ultimately, if it isn't appealed, then it's a lien on their property. But you guys have authority in certain cases to reduce liens and that type of thing if you so choose.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, now are we ready for the roll call? Or have?
I think we already did it.
I think we did it.
Yeah, we voted already.
Yeah, I just was clarifying that it was for the amendment and the actual ordinance, so.
I remember.
And you, I can't remember because it's been like, did we do public comment if they wanted?
He did.
Yes, perfect, yep, so. All right.
Just trying to keep.
Moving on to H9, extension of emergency ordinance 2025-23.
So, this one, my phone, or computer just blanked out on me, but this one requires, is kind of unique because of the emergency motion. It requires a 2/3 vote per Florida statute, so four of you would have to vote in favor of it. It's just the extension of the 60 days on the waiver of the train model. And Commissioner Clark had asked earlier, what's, you know, how long can you extend it? The answer more specifically is you just have to continually assert that there's an immediate and serious menace, which I think you guys have grounds for that, but just, you know, clarify that we're doing, we're extending this based on emergency, maybe include that in the motion. And then the, and so you couldn't, you wouldn't want to extend it for two years or something like that because then the emergency's over. That court should probably look on that disfavorably. But staff is working on updates to this, and they'll be bringing those, and they can be passed through the permanent process.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, I'm making my notes.
Thanks.
An emergency ordinance in accordance with Section 3.1 of the city charter, repealing certain sections of Chapter 69 marine structures and commercial fishing and Chapter 76 stormwater and providing emergency relief from the terrain modification manual requirements, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve a 60-day extension to emergency ordinance 2025-23 due to the emergency situation due to three hurricanes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope. I'd like to just mention here, I did check in with community development yesterday about how well the first emergency has worked for them, and they are down to only one outstanding permit that involves a drainage plan. So, they are caught completely up. So, I think extending this until we've made the necessary changes in the, in formalizing the drainage plan to make it a lot easier than the terrain modification plan, I think this is a good thing to do, to hold us over until we have those changes in place.
Great, thank you. Okay. So, you've already done the motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez? Aye. Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan?
Aye.
Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
H10, non-exclusive license agreement with Two Mermaids Beach Resort for parking access.
I move to table this for further negotiations, and I would be happy to explain that.
You want to explain it?
Yep, I can't. I didn't know if you wanted.
Nope.
Did I get a second before I, or no?
Second.
Okay, I didn't want to step ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, what do you have in mind?
Since I tabled it, I just, if you don't mind, Arden, I'd like to kick it off. And knowing you, we probably are going to be on the same wavelength on this one. So, I did some homework on this, and quite frankly, the city is getting ripped off. And that's the nice way to put it. And how, to my knowledge, and correct me if I am wrong, Victor, the question was asked today if they have been paying for the parking currently or if we have, have they been paying for the parking spaces?
Right now, they do not have a contract with us since like about five, six months ago, so they have not been paying this parking.
Okay, so, to give you a comparison, we're wanting to do this for $8,000 for eight spaces, so that's $1,000 a space. If you go one block over to 101st Avenue, there are three spaces there. Same kind of layout, sand parking lot, not anything fancy, but three spaces. Those three spaces, and feel free to stop me if I'm wrong on any of this, those three spaces average about $1,852 a month. Times 12 is $22,224 for three spaces. So, if you.
What street was that?
That's 101st.
Thank you.
I apologize. I don't think I said that. It's one block over because this is 102nd. So, if you take that average and you times it by eight spaces, that comes to $59,264 a year.
I think your numbers are wrong, though. I've been working with, going back to Gary Brumba. It's, that's, you're saying it's a month, but it actually is, those are numbers.
No, I said $1,800 a month.
Right, and they are not $1,800.
That's for all three spaces. All three spaces come to $1,852 a month is what they're making an average a month for those three spaces.
Victor?
I don't have those numbers with me. I'd be happy to report back.
As well.
And what it basically.
So, maybe we should table it.
That's why I want to table it because basically, even if you take the eight grand out of it, that would leave the city at losing $51,000 and change in revenue that we're not getting off of those parking. Now, one thing that disturbs me on the tabling, and I think it's something that we do need to address, is they haven't paid for parking spaces in eight months. We have a sign that says Treasure Island Beach Access there. I thought I had a picture of it. But I do have a picture of, in our eight spots, they have no parking towaway zone, the Two Mermaids, in those eight spots, even though it says Treasure Island Beach Access Parking.
We're not collecting any revenue for those parkings at the moment, so.
So, they are towing people off of our parking spots that they are not paying for.
Are they here?
And that is a huge issue, a huge issue. We haven't collected any revenues in eight. So, these towaway signs, I think, need to be gone yesterday, and they or we have not been collecting revenue for eight months, and they're towing cars out of there. So, that's a huge, huge issue.
Let's go ahead, and you've already.
I have a lot more.
Put a motion for tabling it.
Absolutely.
And I think there was a second, and I'm also in favor of that, but I just wanted to add a little more context to this. This came up about a year ago, and I pushed back on it. This came up about a year ago, and, and I, I pushed back on it with the previous, when Mike Monger, not Mike Monger, yeah, when he was still here as the, as the Finance Director, and, and they came in with something even significantly lower than what's on here.
Yes, I saw that.
And I used what he gave me at that time, which he said we were collecting about $2,600 a year per parking spot. That was on the average, and, and I've been working with Victor. We don't have an average yet, but if you do the 2,600.
I do, Commissioner.
You do?
Yes.
What is it?
The average is about $2,580 per parking space.
All right, you're right at the 2,600 that, that Mike had, that Mike had, had shared with me. But anyway, that would be, let's see, what'd you say, 2580 times eight spots? That's 20,000 a year, almost 21,000. And so even this 8,000 is, is significantly less than that. In fairness to Two Mermaids, I will, as I did learn more about the, the historical, they have no parking space.
Right, right, right.
And apparently, when Gulf Boulevard was widened, it took away their parking spaces, and the city at that time made some kind of agreement with them so that they could stay in business. So, so the argument for keeping it, you know, I guess artificially low was, was to allow them to stay in business.
And I definitely am not saying we shouldn't give some type of.
Some kind of discount.
A discount, but that much of a discount is.
Can we get just like a spreadsheet with the numbers or something?
Yeah, we definitely need a spreadsheet with the numbers for sure.
What number, what do you?
Arden?
Like comparison parking lots.
Oh, oh. You're tasking Commissioner, not my Finance.
I love it.
You're tasking Commissioner Dickey, not Victor. Correct. Well, here, just for clarity. I'll tell you what, let's give Victor something to work with, because what you're asking, Vice Mayor Vasquez, is that we push, that we'd negotiate with them a little bit more.
Yes, absolutely.
So what's on the, what's on the proposal before this is $8,000 a year. If we gave them a 50% discount, and I'm only suggesting that because, again, they need these parking spaces to run their business. If they, if, I'm suggesting that we may be discounted by 50%, so therefore, we would collect 1,1320 a year.
I think I would, I still want to see actual numbers. I agree with Commissioner Clark. I'd like to see a spreadsheet with an average of the parking spaces around there, because our numbers are a little off. So I just, and by no means am I saying mine are correct, I just, I just know for eight months, we haven't been collecting anything, and that I knew came from Victor. And they have towaway signs, and they've been towing cars away that park there, and we have not been collecting one penny, and that is a huge issue. So, and I, I think there's a lot of different things we need to look at on this, too, because I do know the historical value of it and how they lost their parking and such.
Well, there's, there's a lot of issues with this property.
There, well, and.
It is, it, it used to be. There used to be a long-term family that, that owned it.
Yes.
It got sold, and the next day, it ended up on the, a real estate sheet, that basically you could buy, you know, a home on this lot, and it even said that you got eight parking spots.
Eight free parking spots.
Yeah, and it's kind of like, no, as soon as anything got, it was sold, it would trans, transfer back to the city and they didn't have it.
And if I'm correct, didn't they buy it for, like, in the threes?
Yes.
And then it was put on the MLS at 8.9 million, selling it with eight parking spots.
Let's table that, because, yeah, there is a lot that we can get together and.
Based on the instruction, I'm going to bring some analysis of the area for the parking spaces cost, and then you discuss what price we put in the contract in the next meeting.
Perfect. And then what can we do as far as, because this is going to take a little bit to do, the towaway signs and us not getting any money for it and.
That's just a matter of us having them take them down.
That's, well, that's it.
It's that easy.
That's why I'm trying to.
Do you want to instruct someone?
To instruct the staff, is that some?
Code enforcement.
If we can do that, yes.
Look into that, and somebody's got a crowbar, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table it.
Victor, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I was going to ask if the intention is to make a deal with them and lease the parking with them will be enough, because I can send a communication with them, will be enough just to them to block that sign of towing and not, do not tow anybody, or.
I'd say don't tow anyone.
I mean, they would have to block, I mean, they would have to blank the signs out, because it, I mean, it's very plain to see.
Are, are they open for business?
I don't believe so.
I drove by there a couple of days ago, and it didn't look like they were even open for business right now.
So they didn't pay their business tax for, I believe, two years, and they just paid it last month.
Got it.
We'll find out if they're planning on opening, because sanding ovations is around the corner, so we probably utilize those spots for revenue.
Definitely. That's my big thing right now, is immediate action is, is just.
We have a motion to table and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzanne?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
All right. H11, Approve City Manager Purchase Authority to Enter Into Construction Contract with Qualis General Contractors LLC for the construction of six pickleball courts at Roselli Park.
Well, I'll get my house burned down if I don't motion to approve this one. I move to approve, I'm looking at two of you right now. I move to authorize the city manager's purchase authority with, is it Qualis?
Yep.
General Contractors LLC in the amount of Option A of 356,281 for construction of six pickleball courts at Roselli Park. Oh, I have to pick an option, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's something we got to, that's something we have to discuss, the option.
Hold, please.
So there is a, a softer material.
Yeah, and it's like $18,000 more.
Well, it's three, just over $3,000 per court.
Yeah, and I just, I, I've heard from all the pickleballers that, you know, that would be, and I play pickleball, that would be very good to have, and I just think if you're going to spend 300 and something thousand dollars, what's another 18,000?
Right.
So to do it, if you're going to do it, do it right, as my dad used to always tell me.
Mike doesn't need to say anything, we're making his case for him.
So no, I just think if we're going to do it, we should do it right, and that would be the way to do it right.
I agree.
I agree to approve it with the cushion surface.
You want me to go ahead and do it? All right.
Make the motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager's purchase authority to Qualis General Contractors LLC in the amount of Option A at 356,281 dollars and 10 cents for construction of six pickleball courts at Roselli Park.
Second.
Okay, and that is the more expensive version.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
You kidding me? I have my neighbors looking at me.
Yeah, exactly, and so we've got Robert.
Do you guys not have to speak since we did the cushioning?
Yeah. We made it easy.
I have to say something. I mean, it's been a year and a half in the process. Great work, Mike, great work, Kathy, 42 years, she's seen it all. Yeah, this is kind of a no-brainer. Thank you, Commissioner Vasquez. Thank you for protecting my knees. I'm getting, I'm getting old. Cushion works. This is a great investment. It's a, it's a, it's a big deal. I think we should need to have a big commissioning thing, ribbon cutting in like three months, you know, maybe March or April, I think a big party.
You want your name on the board?
No, I mean, kudos, I mean, how much have we built in the last couple of years? This is a big deal, not only because it's, it's, it's me, but it's, it's a big deal. We're actually building something that has morale, welfare, and recreation things. It's a, it's a big deal. People, we got, what, 200 people or so went on group? I love golf, but pickleball is, is paradise. We can age into this. It's a really good deal, it's, it's a, it's a big deal, it's a kudo to you all, kudo to the staff here. We're going to have a big party. Thank you.
Agreed.
I presume you're Michael?
Yes, he is.
Michael Fergan Capri, following pause, I've declined to communicate any more information. I want to thank you, Mike. I was going to just go through some of the facts relative to the growth of the sport. I don't think it's necessary now, but I, I will someday like to share it, because it might influence what we do at Treasure Bay. That's all I'm saying for now. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Michael.
All right, moving on. We've got to vote, don't we?
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yep.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzanne?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Next item, State Fire Marshal Cancer Decontamination Grant Award Acceptance.
I move to accept the state of Florida Decontamination Equipment Grant program funding in the amount of $35,373 and appropriate $11,766.91 from the city's insurance proceeds to satisfy the 25% match requirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have a speaker.
Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions, but if you did vote against that and they did burn your house down, we need this equipment to clean our gear, so thank you for approving that. But yeah, this is important to us. 72% of our online duty desks are cancer-related, and this equipment will help us decon and clean that equipment appropriately. Right now, our standard process is we get back to the station, we bag it up on the scene, we get back to the station, take our, take our bunker gear to a neighboring station, have them clean it for us while we wait for it. So we're out of service for an hour, hour and a half out of the city. And then the other, the additional one is the, the hard gear washer. That is new to our industry, and it'd be a great asset to us, because right now, what we do with our life packs, air packs, our, our flashlights and everything, we just scrub and clean as best we can. But they, they still off-gas, and the off-gas is what's killing the firefighters, the off-gassing. Now, off-gassing just continues to happen until you clean it properly, and without this type of machinery, we can't clean it properly. So with the approval of this, $11,000, we can make sure that we reduce the cancer risk tremendously of our firefighters, so we're asking you to vote in favor of this.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I will, just a little side note, when I did the, the fire, what is it called? I can't think of the name of it.
One-on-one ops.
That's what it was, the one-on-one ops. In the discussion after, I did not realize that the number one killer of firefighters was cancer. So I'm actually really glad to see this on there, and it's one of the reasons I'm excited for the new public safety building, because I've also saw what you had before, where now you can actually have a room where you can go and do all of that in as well.
And this equipment would move from our temporary to our permanent station, yes.
Wonderful, so I'm absolutely thrilled, and you guys already saved us once of a disaster when Mike's little boat blew up.
Yes.
And it could have easily burned our other boat up, and you guys acted very quickly, so, so thank you for that, but I'm actually really glad to see this on there.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? No, no questions. All right, and we have no public comment. Please call, roll.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzanne?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And our last item for tonight, other than our commissioner reports, is Approve Resolution 2025-24 for Appointment and Contract of City Attorney.
I move to approve the contract in Resolution 2025-24, Appointing Vos Law Firm as City Attorney Effective, would that be?
How about November 18th?
November 18th.
Two weeks from today.
So, yeah, the contract says the 4th, that was tonight, that was the contract provided.
In order for you guys to work together, though, you would need that, right?
But yeah, you're, you're certainly able to amend as you see fit, but just letting you know, clarifying that.
But the 4th would be.
That would give them a two-week overlap.
Correct.
They did it on the 18th.
So I'm going to go city for effective November 4th.
No, no, I think he, it would give them a two-week layover, or not layover.
Overlap between Gavin's here for 30 days more.
Right, so for, for November 18th, they would have.
Yes, sir.
Two weeks to work together.
Correct.
Okay.
We're ready to start tomorrow, or we can start on the 18th? Either way.
I mean, I thought the original was so that you guys could work together. That's why I don't know why we're waiting till the 18th.
This way, we'd work together for more than two weeks? If you wanted to make, only two weeks, we could wait two weeks to get started.
I think Arden's saying work together the last two weeks, not the first two weeks.
So I'm asking, though, what, what is the general consensus? Do you want them to work together four weeks or two weeks, or kind of what's the consensus there?
It's a, financially, it's about a $16,000 difference, so it's not.
Yeah, it's not drastic, but.
But anyway, it's.
I got it.
Well, let's ask, let's ask Ralph.
Yeah. What do you think? Let's ask you.
Yeah, no, no, Ralph, on transition.
Well, we could ask Gavin, too.
Yeah.
I think Gavin's way, ready to say.
I don't have a preference either way, and we already, we call it right seat, left seat in the military, but this meeting, he watched, observed, next meeting, he'll be sitting in, in, on the 18th, and in between that, we're going to be a whole lot and have him CC'd on all emails and that type of thing. We've already been in communication, so it just really is ultimately what, what the city wants to do from a financial impact standpoint, so.
Gentlemen, what's your thoughts?
I think, I think two weeks overlap is sufficient.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Agree? All right, so effective date, 11/18/2025.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And we have no.
Just on the resolution, it should say November 4th instead of October 4th on the bottom.
Oops, where did I put it? There it is.
H2, there's just a typo.
When you guys are amending it anyways to make it effective.
November 18th.
November 18th.
We'll type that in.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we just need a.
Roll call.
Yep, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzanne?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
All right, that is the end of our items, so now we'll move on to the commissioner reports.
All right. So I wanted to mention the awesome ICCA Isle of Capri Community Association. They did a great job with the Halloween get-together neighborhood thing they did down Capri Boulevard. We had tons of people, and it was an absolutely wonderful event, so I just wanted to give a huge thank you to them, and I think that's something that all the islands should consider, because we had people coming from other neighborhoods saying that, how much they loved that the kids weren't having to walk up and down every single one, so might be something just to look at moving forward, and it ended up being a really cool block, block party. Just a couple of reminders, November 11th at 11:00 AM, starting at Roselli, I'm sorry, starting at Paradise, is the Veterans Parade. There are going to be, it's going to be bigger than it's ever been. What?
I was going to say, I thought it was the 11th.
What did I say? I apologize.
11th is the actual date, but I didn't-
That's Memorial Day. I have something for that one, too. Sorry, Sunday, November 9th.
11th is Veterans Day on Tuesday and Saturday.
Yes, and I have something for that, too. But November 9th at 11:00 AM, we have the Veterans Parade starts at Paradise and ends at the community center, starts at 11:00 AM, and I, it looks like it's going to be bigger than it's ever been, and this is a really important one, because it's also celebrating our local, yes, our local post reopening. 158, that's, I forgot to write that down. Post 158 is reopening. So it's going to be a great parade. If you aren't in it, definitely somewhere along the way, try to get out and just support. There's going to be a lot of veterans in the parade on golf carts, so get out and support that on November 9th. On November 11th, on actual Veterans Day, at 2:00 PM, the new veterans memorial in Madera Beach, it's right on the Madera, the Madera Beach side of Tom Stewart Causeway, right by the 911 memorial. They have a beautiful veterans memorial they've put in there. That starts at 2 o'clock, it's the ribbon cutting. So definitely, if you get a chance to go out there and see that and support that grand opening on Veterans Day, that would be awesome. We know Sanding Ovations is coming, we have the weekend before and the weekend after Thanksgiving, so definitely mark your calendars for that. On November 12th, so we're going right, right in a row. Wednesday, November 12th, I am doing my November chat with your commissioner. That will start at 5:30 on Wednesday, November 12th, that'll be on the fifth floor. I was told to make sure and tell everybody to try and use the first floor elevators, so, to get to the fifth floor, but that is on November 12th. And last but not least, I am very happy to say, on the agenda next, at our next meeting, the Roselli Playground covers, I believe, is, am I correct, it's still going to be on that agenda? It's, yes, well, it should be on that agenda to approve the covers, the new covers for the Roselli Playground. It is, even when it's cooler days, since the tree got taken out by the hurricane, I have gotten several calls from moms and grandmas of how hot it is out there with the artificial turf and the slides and the swings. So I'm happy to say that Kathy and Mike worked hard on this and found a more reasonable price to cover this playground so that the kids can get out there and play. So hopefully, it should be on the agenda, the next agenda to approve with you guys, so I'm very happy about that. And that's it.
Commissioner Clark?
I just have two things. Well, the main thing was the lawn mowing program, but we got that all taken care of, so that's what I, my residents are talking about to me daily. Secondly, also, just look out, be on the lookout, I'm going to be having another, also commissioner pizza party sometime here in November slash December timeframe, so be on the lookout for that, and I hope to see everybody at Sanding Ovations.
Great. So experience Sanding Ovations in VIP style. This exclusive $1,000 package grants access to the sponsored hospitality tent Friday through Sunday, shared with event sponsors and positioned on the west side of the stage for convenient backstage access. Enjoy complimentary snacks and beverages throughout the day, plus scheduled food service throughout the weekend. Friday at 6:30 PM is Glory Days, Saturday at 1:00 PM is Foxy's Cafe Pizza, Saturday at 6:30 is Sloppy Joe's Restaurant, Sunday, 1:00 PM is Ricky T's. You'll also receive a premium, secured, and numbered VIP parking spot at City Hall located at 10451 Gulf Boulevard. Transferable VIP parking passes with in-and-out privileges, and four official event t-shirts. Limited availability, reserve your VIP experience today. Perhaps next year, the police chief and Kathy may coordinate a VIP police escort of Treasure Island immediately following Saturday's fireworks finale. Chief?
No.
No? Yes? Another grant?
My helicopter, next flight season, absolutely.
Sweet.
Charlie, you can fly us out.
All right, Pinellas County Beach Renewment Project officially reached Treasure Island yesterday. They began work on the south end of Sunset Beach. During construction, Sunset Beach from the rock jetty to the southern tip will be an active work zone enclosed to the public. I found out that the hard way at the end of my run last night, I had to go backwards, couldn't go through the construction zone, it was, it was pretty well fenced off. But anyway, the turn parking lot in the Sunset Beach Pavilion Playground will be closed during the time, during this construction time for safety purposes. They're expected the work to last another couple of weeks before the crews move to northern sections of Sunset Beach. And that's all I have.
Boy, being last, it's tough. The one thing I do want to say, though, is that the American Legion, I've been, since July, I've been saying two weeks, because that's what they kept telling me, and it was two weeks, and it's two weeks, and today, it's two weeks, and it'll be probably in two weeks, it'll be two weeks, but no, I think that they're going to open up, and there's a lot of work that's been done over there, and I'm going to be walking in the Veterans Day Parade with my wife, and I'm going to have two things. I'm going to have my, my mayor shirt on, and I'm also going to have my cover for, for the American Legion, because I also serve as an officer for the Sons of the American Legion, and we're, I'll tell you what, we're very happy to, to get back into our own building. We've been sharing with the folks over in St. Pete, and we appreciate everything they've